This special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is February 7th, 2019, and the time is 3:02. I will have a roll call, starting from my far right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Perleberg.
Allison Beckham.
And Patty Beckman. All board members are present, and we do have a quorum. We will now move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Board Member Beckham, do you want to lead us?
Where'd it go? No, they moved it on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now move to Dr. Krikard to present the discussions.
Are you going to vote on these, Jim?
Yes, actually, okay.
Oh, there we are. We don't have to.
I do want to.
Because we have an action item.
Okay.
You might explain that.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So moved. Board Member Beckham moves. Do I have a second?
A second.
Board Member Perleberg, second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda is approved. We will move now to Dr. Krikard to present the discussion items, going for 3A, the second review of the 2019-2020 capital outlay budget.
Okay, this is, as it says, the second review. You'll see some changes. Mr. Gad will be presenting the overview, as well as pointing out the changes from the first review. So with that, Mr. Gad.
Thank you, Dr. Krikard, Madam President, members of the board. The document that you have, that we'll be working with, has a summary now that's got three pages on the PowerPoint. You'll see, it's the same summary you have here, only it's a little more readable on the screen with the three pages. I will start out by telling you what the major changes are, and then we'll move into some of the detail a bit. The DA, the capital outlay, the regular capital outlay budget, has been upgraded by $1.7 million of more funding, and that is the amount calculated that the state is restoring on a 1/5 basis to school districts that was previously reduced during the recession. So of that, $1.7 million, approximately $1 million has been added to technology, and you'll see that as we move through the slides, and I'll point it out to you when we get there. And the other 7 tenths has been added to the unallocated amount in this first column, and that just basically gives us a place to pay for things that we may not have contemplated or planned for currently. So that's basically where we've assigned the new funding to. In addition, we have some equity amounts in library and in fine arts. I think the board talked about this last time. So we have taken some of those funding amounts and put them at the district level in that particular subject area, so that the equity issues that might exist between schools can be addressed directly through that curriculum department here at the district office. So let's begin by talking a little bit about the summary. The first page basically tells you that there are five capital outlay funds. The first column, the DA, is the ongoing district's capital budget annually allocated by the state. It's a function of average daily membership and a formula. The second column, as you're aware, requires an election. The district successfully passed a capital override two or three years ago, so it's got a ways to go. It's a seven-year authorization, and that added $8.5 million to the district's total capital budget. Adjacent Ways is a budget that currently consists of $4 million. That is a levy budget, it's a tax rate budget, that was authorized by the board, and we've got a couple of allocations here, but we don't really have a lot of specifics yet. This budget tends to be allocated to places where new construction is occurring because it's an infrastructure budget. That's why it's got the title Adjacent Ways. It includes half-streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, bus bays, fire lanes, and so it's got a limited number of things that you can use it for, but it tends to be tied to places where you are doing major remodeling or new construction, like Cherokee. And so that, this budget would help avoid some of the bond funding for that portion of the work at Cherokee because it's a separate budget, and the board would want to use this and preserve its bond money for something else. Then, of course, the bond program is listed here with the balance that we have at this point in time. And then the school plant fund, it's got $6 million in it. It's an accumulation of revenue that the district has from sale and long-term lease of property. And a lot of this money, other than the district office being in here, a lot of it had been accumulated over a long period of time prior to the district office sale. This particular fund primarily can be used only for capital outlay. That's just the nature of how the legislation is written, and it's fairly complicated, but generally, when you get through all of it, you wind up with a capital outlay use. So as we come down the page, copiers, we're on a plan. And let me go to some of these detailed pages so that you can see. Okay, copier replacement, year two through year five is shown there. We put that $300,000 in the budget. That's to purchase new copiers for the schools primarily. And that's something that districts typically have to deal with every five to seven years because of the technology and because of the uses that those machines get. District-wide technology, in this particular case, it's in the DA budget, is at $225,000, and it kind of handles major computer repair and other kind of emergency technology needs. Classroom technology, this is where the $1 million has been added. It's been added in the student computer line. That was 1.1, it's now 2.1. And it's intended to move the district toward a one-to-one relationship of devices to students. That's where most districts are trying to get, technology-wise. And I think we're relatively close, but that is the effort. That's why that amount was added in there, to try to get us there quicker. And then the hardware needs, that's typical on an annual basis of the size of the district and all of the hardware and technology, the communication pieces. Software, a large one, $2.25 million. The software here ranges from licensing to just maintenance of software, being able to get updates, et cetera. The first one, for an example, Tyler Technologies, that is the district's finance system. And we have that arrangement with them to give us updates and to respond to whatever calls we might make. And some of the others, Microsoft, that's licensing. So some of these are licensing, and some of them are maintenance, and some of them are a combination of both. Bond, Cherokee. We put in $20 million in this summary, and that assumes that it would be a rebuild, so it assumes that it's at the higher dollar level. And that will become less if the decision in the end is to do a remodel rather than a rebuild, but this particular projection shows it as a rebuild. Adjacent Ways, $500,000 of that $4 million. We've kind of reserved that for Cherokee, thinking that that might be where we're at roughly with some of the changes that would occur out in the front part of the school that would make it eligible for some of the type projects that I mentioned. It's got a $750,000 allocation in regular capital and another $7 million allocation in bonds, so it's almost an $8 million plan for this coming year. It's a big one. This would be in the buildings and grounds area. You will start to see projects that we bring to you for award, especially in some of those maintenance areas down below, because they will far exceed the $100,000 that we have as a threshold, so they will be a bid-type project. And basically, it's an ongoing budget that you're going to need to have every year just to maintain the $4 million square feet that we have under oath. I will tell you that the rule of thumb here is about a dollar a square foot per year. So this budget needs to be at least $4 million. It's more than that, but we also have some older facilities. So I think it's probably where it should be. The thing to realize here is if the bond program were, once it ceases, once you've spent all the bond money, then the DA, the regular district capital, will have to be in a position and large enough to basically provide $4 million annually to create a maintenance plan that's reasonable for the facilities that are in the district. And you don't have to worry about that until we get to the end of the bond, but by then, the state will have restored all of those funds that they withheld during the recession. And so theoretically, you could be in a position to fund it all from capital and not need to go back to a bond, at least for the purpose of facility maintenance. Playground equipment, it's showing some schools here that we think need attention and what we intend to do. Furniture and equipment, this is probably the first time in a while that schools have had a decentralized allocation. We're pushing out $40 a student. It's a million dollars. The schools will make the decision as to how they intend to spend the furniture and equipment money. And you'll see a couple of others coming up where we're also deciding that those monies are best dealt with on a decentralized basis, on a per-student basis. Those, the schools need to be in a position to assess what their highest needs are and be able to allocate their funds to that particular need, rather than create some district-level plan, and all of these furniture and equipment needs are quite a variety of them. Transportation, bond has buses, three of them, that we'll be bidding sometime next year. It also has 10 special education buses contained in that $1.2 million. And the bond, of course, had buses in it. What the bond did not have is the second half of the slide. It did not have anything for white fleet.
For what?
White fleet.
A white fleet.
And so we're using DA, just the regular district capital budget, to try to get a start on replacing some of the vehicles that we have, and we have a lot of them. There are well over 150 vehicles in the white fleet. They, a lot of them are old, high mileage, high maintenance. So we'll be picking up this allocation larger every year to try to catch up to an area that's been neglected, I think, in the past in terms of a reasonable replacement plan. Library, this is one of the areas where we give some money to the schools, and we keep some money at the district office for equity. We're going to give $5 a student to the schools, and the librarians can decide what they need to do in the library. And then the district level would have $200,000. The fine arts would be District 200, School 300. That also will take the form of allocating money to the schools for fine arts, but retain almost half of that total at the district level to deal with schools that maybe they're, the number of instruments they have is substandard to most others, so that we can buy instruments to get everybody closer to the same number based upon the size of the student population. Curriculum, I think the board is well aware of this one. There is a $2 million allocation in the current year budget, 1718. There is a $0.5 million allocation in next year's budget to finish a $2.5 million estimated purchase cost for math adoption. So this is a Part II. Part I is current year. And then next year also, the bigger amount is the $1.5 million for world language adoption. So it's containing the tail end of an adoption that's really authorized this year, and then including enough money to adopt a textbook in a different subject area. Instruction materials, going along with that adoption and other instructional materials that are best budgeted at district level. And then we have $100,000 kind of set aside for whatever might come along that needs support, especially on new material adoptions and especially on textbook adoptions. Athletics, $50,000 decentralized to schools on a weighted basis for grade six through 12. And there's some items listed that would be typical of the type of things that you would buy with this budget. And I think it ought to work well. I think this may be one of the first years where we've decentralized some of those funds to schools rather than having a centralized budget. The athletic department is aware of this and endorses that formula to allocate these funds. And that's the capital budget. And so I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have. You may recall that the intention here is to get a fairly early approval, tentative approval of the capital budget, and then that will allow us to do some bidding and get your authorization through awards so that these July 1 dated purchase orders can try to get things done as much as possible before school starts the 1st of August. So it's intended to try to get vendors who will be told, here's a July 1 PO. You want to act on it in June, be our guest. That's fine. But don't deliver it until July 2nd, and then we're all set to pay for that out of next year's budget. And at the same time, hopefully then, having two months, we'll get some things delivered before school starts.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Gad on the 1920 capital outlay budget?
I have.
Board Member Kravitz?
Could you just clarify for me, the world languages curriculum, is that... And I, maybe you said, and I was just fiddling around my computer. Is it K-12 or...?
It's K-12, it's my, Dr. Nan.
It's K-12, but we have very few world language materials in the elementary schools, so it's predominantly the world language, the foreign language courses, grade six through 12.
Any further questions? Board Member Beckham?
You had mentioned that the FFNE is $40 per student, library $5, and that this is now a school allocation. Is that new for this coming-up budget, or have we ever done it in the past?
I don't know. I mean, it has not been done recently.
Recently, the last five years.
And it is a typical method that most districts use on selected type items where the decision-making is better made at the school level. And that's what this is doing here.
Well, I can answer. It's been a while, but when I was a principal in the district, we did have allocations that were based on student count of board capital.
So one of the things, then, that comes to mind hearing that is, did we go through each of the schools, and is that going to be adequate for each school for their furniture and fixtures? Or are there some, because they're much older, that they might need additional FFNE? And therefore, is there a process for them to ask for additional ones?
It's a good question. It is a typical dollar amount that you will see most districts using. I mean, it's in that rule-of-thummm range. $40 to $50 is a fairly common number for purposes of furniture and equipment. We also will tell the schools, when they get their allocation, which will be going out probably in March, early April, that if they have some special needs, that is not fulfilled within the $40, so let us know. Remember, we have a fairly large unallocated amount in this budget. So if they come to us and say, look, the student furniture in these classrooms are originals. They've been here for 40 years. They're all beat up, then obviously, we would react to that by giving them extra money through that unallocated amount to buy a substantial amount of basic furniture.
And that process is just to come to you as the CFO?
Yeah, and we will put in a memo where we send it out to the schools saying, this is your dollar amount when we take $40 times your ADM, that if you have needs that far exceed being able to deal with the $40, let us know, and we'll react to that.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? Any further questions for Mr. Gad?
Oh, I had one question.
Board Member Beckham?
I apologize. Can you go back to that first spreadsheet? Something I remember seeing that I, is it on this one?
Back on the front page?
Towards the end. It may not be on this.
Oh, okay. Okay, the other direction, right there. That's the third page of that summary, the last page.
Yes, it says carry forward, and it says 20% in there. Where does the 20% come from?
Good question. I'm glad that you asked it. Board Member Kravitz will recall that she asked us to put together a proposal about where we thought balances ought to be as a percentage. And the one that we will be bringing to you in March indicates we think 20% is about the right place to be on capital outlay. It's higher than MNO. But so are the dollar needs. So that's where the 20% comes from. It's a purposeful calculation of a carry forward into next year that guarantees at least a 20% ending balance, the current, in this 1920 budget up here. That is in addition to the 1.7 above on that first page is unallocated. Okay, so...
It's additional that we just...
Yeah, so we've got a set aside for a carry forward that's basically guaranteed unless something drastically happens. And we've got $1.7 million on that front page that should something come along, like the furniture example we talked about, we can deal with that.
All right, thank you. Okay, any further questions for Mr. Gad? We will move on to item 3B, early projection of the maintenance and operations budget review number three.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This, let's see, I gotta remember to get this up to date here. Yeah, I see it. Okay. This is review number three. This one is getting pretty finalized now, I think. Let me point out to you what changes have occurred since we last talked about this. The inflation factor, second line on this slide, is now up to 2% from 1.8. The 2% has been finalized. So it's a done deal, and it obviously gave us some additional funds to work with, so that's reflected in now this calculation that you see. That's really the major change on this page. It added $267,000 to our total available MNO budget, with that change from 1.8 to 2.0. The next page has desegregation, second line down. We have taken desegregation, because it's limited, it's capped at a dollar amount that's reflective of prior year amounts. The legislature, some years back, capped deseg. When they did, the district had most of the money in MNO, and some were in capital. What we're doing here is placing all of the deseg in MNO. So the capital portion no longer for deseg exists. The operational portion now has been increased to compensate for that change from capital. The capital, there is not a specific allocation in capital, as you know from our previous presentation, for desegregation. If needs come along in that area, that's another, the 1.7 million. It previously had $199,000 in capital for deseg. So that $199 has been pushed over now to MNO because that's where we have the big issue at with the enrollment decline. So we're, in a minor way, we're basically using a previous capital assignment now over to MNO. And the 6% estimate on budget balance carry forward fits within, Board Member Kravitz, the 4% to 8% we're going to recommend to the board as the minimum and maximum for MNO carry forward. So kind of telling you what's going to be coming forward for your review. What else is on here worthy of discussion? The desegregation, I think most of you know, has been a subject of previous legislative sessions. It will be back again. There are 19 districts in the state only who have desegregation, so there's a jealousy part that's going on the part of the other 200. And sooner or later, that's going to come to a conclusion, and we'll see legislatively what that is. And so just so that you know, that is an area of concern. It's a large dollar amount, and it's one that probably is going to get dealt with sooner or later. The Prop 123 funding is state trust land money. That sunsets in 2025, so it just falls away, unless the state does something about it. I'm sure they will, because that's going to represent a lot of money for school districts. It has a tendency to be fine until the recession comes, and people who, developers who have bought state trust land default, and then those payments go away, and, you know, things change, the landscape changes. We have to constantly remember, this state is reliant upon income and sales tax. That is their total revenue stream. If the economy falters, their budget falters badly with it. The most stable revenue source, which would have been property tax, is not a function at the state level. So if there's anything that happens and a recession is caused, they will be looking to us again. We represent 50% of their outgo, K-12 does. They will be looking to us for some relief budgetarily, as they did back in '08 when that recession occurred. Next page. So as we move down this page, you'll find that we still have on this list the $160,000 for stipends for self-contained sped. And you'll see that we're taking it out on the next page, which basically means we're removing it from MNO, and we're going to be paying for it from Indian Gaming. Indian Gaming is a cash control fund. So we are adding that in a fairly minor way to how we're funding this upcoming budget. Indian Gaming is roughly $40 a student, so we receive a million dollars or so annually in Indian Gaming. And so this is not going to make a really large difference in the balance in that fund, but it is one where program improvement, as long as it's not major, can be funded from that source. So it helps MNO. The total increases is a $1,178. And when you go to the next slide, the increases that we think you need to, and we need to set aside in the budget, are the same ones that we saw before. Now you see Indian Gaming toward the bottom being paid through Indian Gaming, the stipends. We now have, we now have a balanced budget, and we have a surplus of $231,000. So we're now in a position to adopt this budget at any point in time that you want to, and as you know, we're scheduled to do that fairly soon because of, oops, because of contract issuance. Thank you. Get carried away here, I wasn't watching the screen. There's one qualifier to this, you know, and before we all leap on $231,000 and figure out how we're going to spend it. The calculations in this budget were based upon a loss of 569 ADM. The loss now is in the 590 range. Once the 100 day was finalized a couple of weeks ago, I think it will hit 600. So we will need to take down this budget to some extent because there are roughly 30 more students in decline than we projected initially. That is about that $231,000. So it's going to get eaten up, so to speak, with the reduction that we're going to need to do to compensate for roughly a 600 ADM reduction. And as you know, the reduction we're planning this year, we're also using as the reduction projection for next year. So it's, and if we get more students, and hopefully we will, and that decline will not be 600, then we can revise next year's budget upward. And hopefully, it wouldn't be any more than 600. But I mean, I think that the district is prudent and safe with estimating a repeat, should be on, hopefully, the worst-case condition rather than the other end of the spectrum. That those additional students is about $190,000 of loss that we would have to incur, so that pretty much takes out most of the $231. The next page are the cash control funds. Nothing changing here from what you have seen previously. We've tried to be fairly conservative in the far-right-hand column with how much monies we are subtracting from a revenue standpoint and using for MNO from each of those four funds. I feel comfortable that the amount is small enough that we're not going to have any difficulty. The guardrails in this particular budget that we will be showing you down the road is somewhere between, it's 15 to 25%. That's what we believe to be. The reasonable ending balance in each one of these funds, with a minimum of 15, probably a maximum of 25, and we need to stay in that range. And we have to constantly remember, in this particular case, that these are cash control funds. That means as soon as that cash is expended, it doesn't replenish itself. We have to be careful on how many ongoing obligations we create from these funds, because once that money is gone, unless some new revenue shows up that goes in that fund to offset it, it gradually will pull the balance down. Okay? So you have to be concerned about, let's... So you have to be concerned about, let's, you know, let's, let's use some of this money rather than every morning count it. But let's be a bit conservative about how much we use because of the nature of these, it's not a formula-based replenishment process as M and O is. It's one where, you know, if you had $1,000 in your checkbook and you spent $100 every year, I guess at the end of 10 years, you'd have zero. That's, that's the kind of funds that we're talking about here. But as I say, I'm perfectly comfortable with the allocations that we're using here for purposes of M and O are pretty conservative.
Just a little clarity there because I, in the, on the slide, there is a column for projected revenue of these accounts.
Yes.
So I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused that they, they do, they receive some revenue. Is that on an annual basis?
Yes.
And then there's a portion that is simply just non-renewing cash.
Right.
So it's kind of a mixture.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Of revenue and just cash, correct?
Yep.
In these totals.
Yeah. And I could say I'm very comfortable that we're fine and I'm sure that down the road we can rely on some of these funds again. But we just need to be cautious with how much and how quickly, and we need to watch the revenue. If the revenue is increasing and offsetting more and more of our extraction of money, then, you know, we're more than fine. If the revenue starts to go down, then we need to be careful about how much additionally we take from it because that fund is going to get depleted because of the revenue source.
Mr. Gad, it might be helpful if you have kind of gave everybody the definition of what, the indirect costs, for example, come, I'm guessing, guessing only, as a majority of that is nutrition services.
Yes.
And so that's how we gain revenue there through our nutrition services. The catering function that we have is important to that revenue generation, for example. The MIPS is Medicaid reimbursement for, we are providing services instead of, instead of the government and they pay us for that. Civic Center are leases?
Rentals.
Rentals.
In this case, it's all cell tower. It's only the cell tower portion of the revenue that we're obligating here. The standard rentals of homeowners associations and churches and whatever, that is not being bothered with this. So it's only the cell tower, $1,500 a month kind of revenue that we're actually committing, and that's why the footnote is there, from Civic Center. So it's a very mild and very specifically related revenue that is ongoing. And most of these cell tower folks aren't about to abandon their towers with the investment that they have in them.
And then the last, community education. It might be, you know, I think, heard you say previously at one time in this district, we were getting, the, the reduction is what we take in the M and O as indirect costs. And it was closer, it was several million dollars a year at one time?
Yes, it was.
And, and we are planning, we've already seen some increases in services being provided to families and we are looking to grow the community education department. More services to families, which then, which is paid for, which then also generates more income to the district. But those are the kinds of things that occur in these cash accounts. So projected revenue is just like any business we do with hoping to sell whatever it is that they produce and, and earn money. In this case, it's services that, that we provide. And that, so we can have a pretty good idea of where we're going, understanding that, that we can grow some of them, like the community ed to some cost, and maybe the other indirect costs to some extent. But only so far because we're not basically a money generating business. We are service provider, we are running education, but there is some small element of that. So there's been some talk about the cash accounts, so I thought it might be helpful if we kind of talk about what those accounts are and why they grow.
Thank you.
And I think, I think it's helpful to have these cash accounts available to the district, be able to deal with those years where we didn't fare very well with enrollment. And this is one of them. So I mean, while they do look large, we are now beginning to tap those funds. I'm glad they're there because if we had not had this $2 million in the far right-hand column to offset our M and O problems, we would be reducing program. And so we have to look at that real positive side of this and just be aware, it's a good thing they were there so that we can use them.
Board Member Macken?
Good. I, I'm still a little confused. You mentioned the guardrails of 15% to 25%. Can you define that for me?
Sure. This next to the last column, projected ending balance. Over time, we would then measure that amount being somewhere in the 15 to 25% range of the projected revenue. So we want that balance ultimately not to be less than 15 and probably closer to 25, which is the upper end. So it's key.
Of what, though? What I don't understand is, I understand that the 26 million is 25% of what? That's what I don't understand.
That 26 million, 25% would be the intended maximum ending balance carry forward into the next year.
Oh, okay.
And we would stop, we would stop depleting that fund once it hit 25% and become really concerned if it's down going toward 15. So I'm saying that we certainly, under no circumstances, would want it to go below 15. We probably want to become concerned with it at the upper end of that range at 25. That's what that guideline would say.
So you're saying, let me do that so that I can understand. So I take just, I'm rounding here. The 26 million, 25% of that is $6.5 million.
Yep.
So what, that's where I'm getting confused. What does, what number does that equate to? What means?
If we were, if that right-hand column were growing larger and larger all the time and it causes that ending balance to project that less than, what did you get, 6 million?
So in other words, the amount we're taking.
The 26 million falls below 6.5.
That's right. That's correct.
So right now, you have between, you have about $20 million that over several years or maybe 10 years, could be 20 years, whatever we decide, and especially if we decide on a financial policy, to direct that. Thank you. That's, that's what I was.
And there's a couple of features to that you need to understand. That 2 million will keep ongoing in perpetuity and the revenue may not keep up with it.
Well, that, I understand all that.
So when you say the 20 years, you have to be careful because it, it is a function of constant erosion every year by whatever that right-hand column is doing. So it could be a quicker depletion than a 20-year plan.
Right. It's what you determine because it's a decision, it's just a principal base. And then you, but that's a decision that has to be made.
And I do think that, you know, I think the district should exercise some degree restraint here. You don't want to find yourself, you know, and when, and when Dr. Krikert talked about indirect cost, that's a function of federal programs and an overhead rate and food service. Food service is the biggest contributor. You have to be careful then that the food service revenue of where this $1 million is coming out of food service and going into indirect cost, that that revenue stream over there and their profitability, if we can call it that, remains up. If we're starting to erode prices, if minimum wage, in their case, now they're absorbing because it's a, it's an enterprise fund. All of the staff inside food service are taking the same salary increase that we're giving to other staff members in this projection and they're paying for it out of food service. Okay? And, and they're particularly hit hard with the minimum wage because of the nature of the employees they have. So does that hurt? Could that potentially decrease their median? Maybe. That's why we have to be sure that the catering and some of those other moneymakers stay at a fairly high level to be able to offset what is coming at them that they will have to absorb because their free and reduced lunches amounts from the federal government do not change. What changes is their expenses and their expenses start changing upward. So that's, you know, just as an aside. The same thing would happen in community ed. I mean, if you don't raise rates.
You have to watch all of them.
Then you have that same issue because of some of the lower-paid employees and the minimum wage and all the rest of that.
Okay. You've, you've commented on this before, but can I get some clarity? Are there any handcuffs on any of these accounts? Meaning when you take the money out and deplete it, it can be moved and used for anything in M and O?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Have M and O or capital?
Yes, M and O or capital. Either one.
There's no limitations. Okay.
And capital in this district's case, I mean, generally speaking, we have a lot of capital. I mean, compared to most, we're capital rich. We've got an override, we've got a bond. You know, capital outlay should not in general be an issue of any major proportion. The issue is here. The issue is those 600 students we just lost. And so that's where we need to do everything we can from a marketing standpoint to try to keep that enrollment up. I, I would not be concerned about capital. That'll take care of itself, but this one won't, so.
So I have a question because in the news this week, our governor stated that he's looking at putting additional funding into counselors. And is that, obviously, this is the third look, nothing was mentioned on additional funds for counselors, whether it came from the state or whether maybe we use some of our cash account funds to add to any of our kind of line items. Is that something that we can, that we can look at?
Well, I'll tell you what I know. The governor's budget has $6 million for counselors and social workers. It's a grant application process to get that money. So it is not a part of the formula. And assuming it stays in this budget and the legislature approves it, then at some point, they will push out the, the application process and what you need to do to do that. It tends, it's in that safety, security, safety area that that 6 million resides in. So it's in that SRO where the state is funding some of those resource officers because, you know, local municipalities can't. So, I mean, the committee is going to have to decide, I guess, what the criteria is and who gets approved in an application or not. It's 110 to 150 positions, I'm told, is a part of the 6 million.
For 227 districts.
Districts, right. Okay.
Yeah. So, so, so I mean.
If we apply and we get credited and we're awarded the grant, hallelujah. That's wonderful.
Right.
So have we looked at using some of those additional funds that are in our cash accounts to go ahead and look at planning for additional counselors in our district?
We have not at this point. And I think we were waiting on kind of looking and seeing what the governor's plan ultimately produces and how that's going to work.
And so now that we know that.
But that, those cash.
Some of what, some of what we've talked about is in moving DSEG money from capital to M and O, we, we have to look at that DSEG budget in whole, but that is, that is a possibility to look at for putting counselors and social workers in those schools that were affected by the, by the desegregation, by the OCR complaint and the, and the agreement with the Office of Civil Rights. So we do have the ability to look at the DSEG funds, for example, for that. So we are still in discussions with that. So that would be our fallback position. Our first, first would be to apply for grants and try to, try to get those unless for some reason we don't qualify just on the, on the requirements. But we do have a fallback.
Sounds like it's pretty minimal. So is that something that is going to be decided upon before we decide on this budget?
I think before probably July 1, we'll have some decisions relative to the allocation of desegregation, right?
But we can, we, we will be working on a meeting next week, for example, to look at, at federal funds, desegregation funds and title funds and any changes that we may or may not make to that. And so we'll be working on that this spring as part of the budget process.
Okay. Great. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Any further questions?
Well, were you going to continue?
I can, or?
No, no, you continue.
Okay. We only have one or two more slides. The highlights. We have not, as you've seen from the listing, we've not affected negatively any instructional programs we're aware of. We are not affecting class size ratios. We have staffing standards relative to class size, as you know. We're not affecting any of the ratios. We are affecting the number of people because of declining enrollment, but that does not translate to any change in class sizes. 5% salary increase for all employees, that's what's included. We're not anticipating any reduction in benefits. As a matter of fact, as we look down the road at the plan for the district's insurance trust funds, we will see some enhancements that we're going to be recommending to you for employee benefits. The 2% inflation factor, no change in teacher experience index. That particular item is, is a couple million dollars that relies upon the length of service of teachers. As we have more and more teachers arrive at retirement age and so forth, that, that reduces our TEI and that reduces the amount of money in M and O. So we just need to be aware that if we're in a position where we have a lot of people at the upper end of that seniority list, and as they leave, then we're going to have to be cognizant that that probably is going to have an impact back on M and O because their replacement is not likely going to have the years of experience. The state average is about.
But it's kind of a, a balance. You have younger teachers who are paid less, but we don't get the money. When the TEI came in 30 years ago or whatever, it was because the district's saying, we have all these.
Higher paid teachers.
Senior teachers and, and we don't get any extra compensation for them. And so that was, and so that'll balance.
Hopefully. Although, although, I mean, if you go back to that first slide, you know, it's, it's, it's up there. It's a lot, it's a, it's a big dollar amount. And the state average is about nine and a half years. Ours is up in the 10 and a half, 11 range. So as that comes down then, and you get closer to the nine and a half, you'll get closer to basically no additional monies in that $3 million. And that's where we're going to have to hope that the salary differential between the two, I have not found that salary differential enough because that TEI is a big number. It's awfully hard to get enough out of that salary differential to pay for that reduction in the TEI. And then obviously, we're assuming that the ADM reduction is the same this year as it will be for next year. The 569 is going to be upgraded at this point to close to 600. And the detrimental legislation is not there and shouldn't be. The state, as you all well know, have extra money, so we read anyway. I would think that we would be passing legislation that would take money away when you've got rainy day funds at $1 million and some other things. So I guess it's a billion dollars, yeah, because that's 10% of the, it's a $10 billion state, but it's a billion dollars. So that's kind of the list there. And then the budget prep schedule, we have seen this before. We will be asking you to approve what we just talked about on March the 7th as an action item. It will be a tentative approval, so you can make some changes. And then as we move down to the end of the year, we will do the legally required advertisement on June 11th and the budget hearing and adoption on June 25th.
Board Member Greenberg?
Thank you very much. Just a couple, really one question and one comment. For the 5% salary increase we discussed this before, but I'd just like it out there, the 5% salary increase is for all staff across all levels. So that would include lunch staff, maintenance staff, teachers. Does that include the executive team and executive officers?
It's all employees.
Across the board. Okay, thank you for that. The, yeah, I mean, the, my, this, this, the only comment I have is actually a general comment insofar as because we are losing ADM, which is something, you know, we know we're, we're working on and I'm thankful to the executive team for, for focusing on that. I mean, the, the reality is our M and O budget is also very much driven by how the economy does. And not that I'm a predictor of the future, but, you know, there are concerns about how the economy, because it goes up and it goes down, you know, might look in one or two years. So it is something to keep on the, on the back burner as we look at this budget. This one is, I think, pretty much strong for next year, but also the budgets in the future.
It specifically affects the inflation factor. The minute that state revenue dips, they will cancel that inflation factor. And that is most of the money that offsets the ADM decline. So without that, you take the full brunt of whatever that enrollment decline is translated into this formula, you have some pretty significant financial shortfalls that way.
Plus, if experienced teachers retire and our TEI. Plus, if experienced teachers retire and our TEI.
Drops.
Drops. I mean, it could be a very big hit. We're lucky in a sense that we've covered ADM losses with both the governor's increase in the base rate for each student and then as well as TEI and other factors, because we are fortunate to have some very great and experienced teachers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Beckham.
So, one area I'm excited about, and I just want to confirm that it's still happening and we'll get it before the budget, is that HR is doing a compensation analysis for us, correct? Which will provide us then the data so that we can actually have a better evaluation with more certainty when we're figuring out TEI and what new teachers are coming in and how much we'll actually, you know, could lose or gain in the future. So I think that that, that data is going to be really informative for us. I think it will also then help us in getting a better handle on future salaries for teachers and the years that they're in service and be able to have more open discussions and transparency also regarding that, really compensation.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for. What, what we had last year, May or June, Mr. Virgil, the then interim CFO, presented the teacher salary schedule with, I think, number of people in each cell.
Got like a little scatter.
Yeah, so that we could, we could see that, so we, we could see where the loads were. And, and generally, they were, they were early, early on, but more in the middle of the, of the salary schedule. And so I think we would present that as we did last year, showing the increase, there's an increase as they get another year experience, what that is. I believe it was 2%, two or two and a half. And then on, and then on top of it, another 2 and 1/2% would give them 5%, raising what that looks like. And that's, that's, we were going to follow that same type of presentation that was done last year to give you some consistency, those you, on the board last year and in this year, consistency from year to year of what it looks like.
So I thought we were going to be getting a little bit more specific, not with actual, you know, names of people, but really understanding everybody's salary, especially from a teacher's standpoint, because we had teachers that had been in the district for so long that were, you know, had been capped out. And we understand because we had that salary step schedule. So, but getting the, all the actual data that we could have on that so that we could actually then start looking at, is there maybe a better way of doing compensation than just the salary schedule? It's not that we're doing it right now, but that we could even start to have that conversation. Because when we first brought it up, it was like, you know, everybody's just lumped in together and we just have a number, and when we figure out our budget, we take that lump, we add the percentage to it, and that's our budget. And so we were going to try to get a better handle on actually what is our compensation? How, how is it divided up? Who's making what?
We will.
So that's what I thought we were going towards.
We will present the data that the board as a whole asked for. What I think, what I'm hearing anyway is more detail than what is normally presented. Payroll works individual by individual in, in concert with HR. They say, here's the raise, this is where they have, we have this number of people at this step. Payroll knows exactly who those people are, and they produce contracts in order to do that. But I don't know how much detail, I, I can't get a.
Are you, are you asking?
A understanding of what the, what the detail that you're looking for, if it's not named, the, we have how many teachers are on this step? There are 1,300 and some teachers in the district. And so where all of those people are on the steps in terms of numbers. We have 25 on this step, we have 40 on this step. To, to say what, how many years has each one been in the district to be on that step? Because some years, they weren't given a step, and some years they weren't. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I don't know for what end.
Well, I think if I recall correctly, we used to get a number. This is how much we pay out in salaries. So if we, if we give all our teachers a certain percentage increase, they moved, then they increased, they added that percentage increase, so now we're paying X. But that really wasn't the case because, as we were saying, we have teachers at different levels and different steps.
So that.
Right. And so what we were told is actually what we were paying out in salaries may not match that because they are on different steps. It wasn't just a, an across-the-board.
Everybody actually gets 5%.
5%.
Right, right. And so what, what I remember.
Or that we're paying 5% because you have teachers leaving, and sort of trying to get a better understanding of how much are we actually paying total, in, in salaries total.
Right.
And then there were some people on that salary step who were saying there's problems with the salary step, so that somebody can come in at a different level, be making more, but actually maybe, and I, I don't remember all the exact details. And that's where we were going to try to get the data so that maybe we'll get teachers together.
And that placement when they come in.
Really have a really good, robust conversation.
Right. Placement when teachers come in is an HR function. They look at, they look at their experience, they look at their number of graduate hours, and, and they place it. Some of the things that we've tried to do this year is not put people in at a higher amount than somebody with equal experience that's already here. So somebody has, has 10 years of experience of teaching, but because we froze the salary schedule a couple times, they're only on step seven. Somebody comes into us from outside with 10 years' experience. We don't put them on 10, we put them on seven, because that's where our teachers with 10 years' experience are, but we do that. But what, what I, what I'm saying is, what was done last year, I think work shows you how many, and it was, so this is what happens. I remember Dr. Virgil saying, this is what happened. These, this person moves from this spot on the salary schedule to this spot with one year's experience that's worth 2 and 1/2%. So you take their salary, multiply it by, by 1.025. That, that comes with that, that salary that year. Now we add another 2 and 1/2% to make 5%. We add it throughout the salary schedule and raise the salary schedule so that it reflects that everybody gets a 5% raise, which means as they move through the salary schedule, they get 2 and 1/2% for, for another year's experience and then 2 and 1/2%. If they're already at the end where they don't have a place to move, they add 5%. And he actually figured that by hand because, remember, it was just a dozen people or something that were in that, that situation. So, so you can look at the salary schedule that is in place right now, and then the salary schedule with that 5% raise, and it'll reflect those numbers in each cell, and also have cells telling you how many teachers are in those cells.
Right. And, and I wasn't trying to get into the, the specifics of the salary, salary schedule or not. I just thought we were going to, we were working towards getting more data from HR so that when we do have questions or we want to do a more comprehensive analysis or have a question, we would have the data available for us to move forward with it.
I guess what I'm saying, the people who do that analysis are the HR.
Right. And that's who I thought it was going to be.
Board Member Perlmutter.
Right, yeah, well, I'll just add to that because that's my recollection as well, really. That appears more, more in line is when we started getting out of the frozen state and actually started increasing. And then we were also trying to be desirable for new teachers coming into our district. So all the steps were moving up, but unfortunately, there was a group of teachers that, you know, just, it really stunk, but they had been frozen, so yes, they were moving up a step, but they, they certainly had the perception and a rightful perception that they had been, they had lost three or four steps, however many it was. So then, of course, new teachers coming in, we're getting like the same or close to it because we had increased it all. And I know at the time, that was, that was the big question. Is the step system the right one to do, right one to use? And I think maybe that's where, where your recollection is going to is.
Right, I thought we were going to be getting more data so that we could.
Is there a point we're going to question that? I know there was one year where we tried, we had additional dollars, I can't remember if it was Prop 201 or, no, 123. Prop 123, we used dollars for a specific group of teachers that had been here seven years, gave them a stipend.
And that's all we're.
But, you know.
It was capped out, didn't get a bump.
It wasn't perfect, it wasn't great, it didn't make them whole.
Right.
But there was just kind of that acknowledgement that we don't have the funds to make them whole either.
So our long-range plan is to do what many districts around us and in other states have done and gone from a step-by-step schedule to a range schedule.
Stepless.
And Mr. Gadd has been, been involved in that, Dr. Bowman has been involved in that in previous districts. We haven't had time, frankly, this year, but that is part of the plan. Dr. Bowman and I talked about this just a couple of weeks ago again, that's still the plan, long range, to do that. So that would be a whole revision, which is usually costs some money, but it does create more equity across the ranks of, of teachers and takes into account the variabilities of experience, where that experience is in education.
Board Member Kravitz.
And not to beat a dead horse, but when I see 5% salary increase, all staff, that means even teachers who've been capped out.
Yes, of course. Fall in place.
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
So maybe in the future, we have Dr. Bowman talk further about this for greater understanding at some point? Okay. Okay, moving on. Do we have any further questions? Okay, moving on to information item 3C, the math adoption for implementation in 2019-20 school year.
I'd like, I will introduce Dr. Nance, whose department has worked long and hard with their 80-member committee to have a recommendation for the adoption of a new math curriculum material. So, Dr. Nance.
Thank you, Dr. Krikard. I am really proud of the work that this group has done over, I believe it's been 10 or 11 months. They started last spring, had a series of meetings throughout the, the spring semester, and then again, picked it up again in the fall and then really hit it hard. Mrs. Redner and our math coaches have led this committee, but we have a large number of teachers from all of our schools, all levels of math. A number of them are here this evening. Some are going to participate in the presentation for you. So this is really a group effort. We also have some representatives here from our vendors who are anxiously awaiting outcome of this next week. This is a large adoption. Math is a large dollar adoption. We have students K through 12, all of our elementary students, all of our middle school students, and a very large percentage of our high school students are in math, as it should be. And we have materials that are outdated, have been with us for many, many years. It's time to refresh, it's time to match the math standards of the state of Arizona, and it's time to become a little more innovative. And things have become very, much more innovative over time. And so I'm very pleased to introduce Mrs. Redner, who will introduce her team, and I know they're going to take turns presenting the outcome of the committee work to you this evening. So, Mrs. Redner.
Good afternoon, President Beckman, members of the board, Dr. Krikard and Mrs. Como. I am Cheryl Redner, and I'm proud to be the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning here. So it's my privilege to share with you today the extensive process that we've gone through as Dr. Nance talked about. It's been 10 months since we started this process, and to finally bring a recommendation for approval for comprehensive K-12 math adoption for implementation in the 2019-20 school year. And so the first thing I want to do is talk about the process and how we've communicated that. And I'm going to refer to the website where this has been posted since the beginning of our journey. And so on our website, on the left side, you can see the, the committee and the outline of what's been going on. I'm going to start in the middle, which talks about in April when we started this process, we asked each principal to identify committee members. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in just a moment. And, and our coaches are going to go through specific details about what happened during those, those meetings, but I'll let you notice that we went through the process. We did some work over the summer, and when we came back in August, we refreshed those committees if we had some attrition, and then we came back to the work that needed to happen. I'm going to refer down to December was our last formal meeting, and we looked at the results of the rubrics and the consensus that happened throughout that process. And here we are tonight, this afternoon, sharing this with you. We will be bringing the next step to you for final approval next week at our board meeting. And then the, the next part I want to introduce you to is that we would like to start ordering the week after. And there, we need to really work on the ordering of it, which is a pretty intense process to make sure all of our students receive what they need to have, because then, in a, in a perfect world, all those materials are going to get delivered to the warehouse in, in March. We have a couple of people down at the warehouse who will barcode everything, check things out to teachers and for, for schools. We'll start a soft rollout of our PD in the summer, and teachers will have materials to look at in the summer, and in the summer, and then we'll start implementation next fall, in August, and then continue with our PD plan at that time. So, I need to go back. So, I talked about, oh, wait, I'm sorry, let me go back to that for just a second. On the right side of our website, you'll see just an overview of what we expected from our committee members. And we're going to talk about all the, the pieces and parts and expectations. Again, teachers were recruited by their site administration, and I'll talk about specifically who was on that committee in just a moment. But if you'll notice, we talked about what we focused on. We wanted to make sure we investigated what needs we, we needed to meet as a math adoption committee. We talked about the funding, and Mr. Gadd was able to speak about that just a moment ago. Our committee was asked to communicate internally and to go back onto their campuses and work with their grade levels and with their, their groups and make sure they shared what was happening, get some input and bring it back to us. It was very important to us for them to, to communicate back and forth with us. And so the, the committee has done a fabulous job, and those who are here tonight and watching us, we really appreciate it because they've done a good job communicating back and forth. Okay, this is the technology piece. So, I talked about who was on the committee. So you can see it was quite an inclusive committee. We have representation from every campus, including campus administration, parents. We had representation from our English Language Learning Department, special ed gifted, gifted our curriculum specialists, technology, all part of this committee giving input. And our Directors of Curriculum also were part of this process. There were close to 80 people on this committee, which when I say it sounds like an awful lot of people on one committee, which it was, but we really did break it out by groups for the most part by levels. And so they were broken out and, and led by our fabulous district math coaches. So I'm going to introduce them to you now, and they're going to take it from here. I want to introduce you to Donna Dempsey, who's our elementary math coach, and Maryann Klein, who's our secondary math coach. I'm also going to give a little shout out to Jen Austin. She was our, I think she's watching us, but she, she was our middle school math coach, and she had to leave us in December, and she worked tirelessly as well. These coaches did a remarkable job working with the, with the groups during this process. They facilitated the meetings with skill, and they've been hugely instrumental in preparing this information for us to move forward. And we really couldn't have done it without you. So thank you to all of you, and I'm going to turn it over to them. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Maryann Klein, I'm the secondary math coach.
And I'm Donna Dempsey, and I'm the K-5 math coach.
And we're just going to give you an overview of the process that we've gone through. During our first meeting, the breakout groups were split into our grade level or our content area subgroups. And in those subgroups, we discussed the features, the positive features that our current programs have and some of the features that our current programs lacked. Those, those common features that we discussed turned into our criteria. It was put on a graph, and that graph was then voted on to determine the order of the importance of that criteria for us. After those subgroups met and discussed, we came back together as a whole group, and we found that elementary, middle, and high school all had some very common, highly ranked criteria. And we took that and we combined them, and that's how we created our participation letter that was sent out to vendors. The committee members were then asked to share that common criteria with the teachers on their.
on their campus, and then bring feedback to our second meeting so that we could finalize our letter being sent out. So, that was the work that we did last fall in April and May. When we returned in August, the committee reviewed those highest-ranked criteria, just as a refresher, from April and May, and we also reviewed some sample rubrics. One of those rubrics being the previous SUSD math adoption rubric. The result of that first meeting back was the completion of a tiered rubric that had descending point values based on importance. For example, a program meeting the state's standards was weighted and given higher point value than that same program being compatible with School City, which was more of a wishlist item. So, that was the... The team members felt that they were both important, but not equally important, so that was the reason for our descending point value. Although each grade, although each level created a different rubric, we all followed the same structure and the same path to arrive at that rubric. Once the rubric was complete, each breakout group was asked to return to their campus, share that rubric at their campus, and bring feedback to that next meeting, where we would then agree to use that rubric moving forward. And we did. At that next meeting, we came to a consensus to move forward and use that rubric as our tool to grade the material on.
So, now that we've taken the time to create a good rubric together, and we'd all come to a consensus that it would be the tool that we use to decide which program to present to you, we went through multiple rounds of evaluating the programs. So, we started first by evaluating only on Tier 1. And on Tier 1, we looked at such things such as standard alignment and the level of rigor that the program provided, and we evaluated all the programs that were submitted based on that first tier. After that, we were able to eliminate some of the low-scoring programs. If it didn't hit high numbers on Tier 1, we didn't care what else it had. And so, when we came back around to do a second evaluation, the programs that were still around, we evaluated based on Tier 2 and Tier 3. And in that, we were looking at online materials and additional resources that supported student learning. Based on this, we were able to average our scores from all three tiers and find what our top programs were. So, the total scores, then, after the average was created, we went to the vendors and invited people to present their programs to us. We had presenters come and present to each subcommittee based on the programs that we were looking at, and during those presentations, each committee member was able to evaluate the program with a brand-new three-tier rubric. So, they started back at Tier 1 and took the information that they had learned in the process to create their final score on that. After the meeting, they took samples and online access codes back to their campuses and back to their colleagues and said, "Here's what we saw, this is what I thought, this is how I scored it, what do you think?" And they were able to get feedback from them. When we met back in December, with their feedback from their campus, with feedback that we had collected from the public viewing hours, we were able to turn in final rubric scores, and those final rubric scores were then used to select our top programs at each level. And now, we're going to go ahead and invite some of our committee members up to introduce the programs that we're selecting. So, I would like to invite Sheila and Michaela, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves to you.
Hi, my name is Sheila Fullerton, I teach 5th grade at Kiva Elementary School.
And I'm Michaela Leopold, I'm a 1st grade teacher at Desert Canyon and also an instructional coach at Desert Canyon.
Do you want to go first? Okay, so, I was asked to why we liked Big Ideas. We liked it right from the get-go, but we had to dig deeper. So, what I liked about Big Ideas was the easy transition it brings going from My Math over to a new program. Being an old or experienced teacher, I went from Everyday Math to My Math, and now we're looking at a new program. So, looking right at the program, it's easy. It breaks it down very nicely. Laura's notes kind of helps new teachers learn a new program, and then with us, it's the transition was very nice. It's standard-aligned, and it's great for 5th grade. So, one of our big topics are place value, fractions, volume. Has a nice flow from Chapter 1 all the way through to Chapter 13. Next thing we liked was that the way it's taught. So, it has an apply-and-grow, so you teach the lesson, and then they apply the learning. Then they have the homework. The homework's in the book, and then it also has a spiral review. That was kind of important to us, that we wanted to be able to have a spiral review. Another thing we liked is there is a QR code that you can scan at home for a homework helper with the parents, which we thought was valuable. They don't understand it, or the kids forget how to do the lesson, they can just take their cellphones or their laptops and scan the code, and a little homework helper video pops up. Loved that. Next thing we liked also is it offers a lot of rigor. So, there's a lot of conceptual learning. At the end of each chapter, there's a performance task, and then there's a cumulative review. We liked that as well. It has games, kids like games. We're trying to... We're being, coming from a school, we are already 1:1. We can teach this math online, fully online, or we can teach it through the book. Gives us opportunity to break in, reteach, mediate, enrich, do all that great stuff. Teach online, not teach online, so we really like that, those options as well. There's games and immediate data provided for us from... We go right in, and we can see how they scored right away. The online, like I said, was great too, so we're loving that, and so, that's what we liked.
Okay, I'm going to try not to repeat the things that Sheila said. The math program is research-based, and if you're familiar with any of the educational researchers, John Hattie is foremost and prominent, and the program follows his best practices. So, that's one of the things that we loved with his current research. The progression of the materials across the grade level was coherent, so if you start from kinder, all the vocabulary is common, and it goes upwards through the grades. We really enjoyed that it addressed the state's standards. That was to the full depth necessary. The lessons integrate the use of the mathematical principles, which was important to us. The lessons were discovery-based, so that included real-world problem solving, and it was focused on problem-solving, the whole problem. Like Sheila mentioned, it's very rigorous. It goes from surface level to deep level. My group specifically liked the learning targets. Each lesson had a learning target and success criteria, so the teachers were able to follow, and also it was student-focused. We liked how it incorporated literacy strategies, so it was cross-curricular. They, as she mentioned, they had ready-made small-group centers, which is good for the younger grades and also the older grades. We thought the teaching manual was very friendly, it was user-friendly. There's a lot of differentiation embedded inside of the program. There's a lot of scaffolding, so it considered EL learners, it considered RTI programs, even the gifted programs, so it hit all the levels. The homeschool connection for this program was fabulous. The practice pages have QR codes, like Sheila mentioned. This links to videos, so each homework page has a QR code where families can go and they can look at videos. There's also online tutorials. Assessment-wise, there's lots of opportunities during the program to do formal assessment. The summative assessments had performance tasks. Teachers can actually build their tests with just, with a variety of assessments, so it wasn't just multiple choice. They could go on, they could do short-answer tests, long answer. Another feature was that they had online skill trainers, so students lacked skills, they could go online, build their skills. The classroom that was online was super dynamic, so the student addition matched the teacher online portion, they had video presentations. We really thought that it brought students into 21st century learning, so those are some of the highlights.
Thank you so much. And you can see up here on the PowerPoint that we've included some of the things that are included in the pricing that we received, and that includes professional development, includes barcoding of all the materials for teachers, which is nice for our warehouse staff. I'm going to bring up Stephanie from middle school to introduce their recommendation.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Muzensky, I teach 7th grade math at Tonalea. I am a major math nerd, and the curriculum that we want is absolutely amazing. So, we... When we were in the evaluative process, this curriculum was one that was kind of lower through that process. It was third out of the three when we went to go watch it. As soon as we saw that presentation, I think all of us were just completely stunned at how amazing this curriculum really is. It is very progressive in the way that teachers teach and the way that students learn. So, there's a lot of... In the curriculum, it provides two different things when we go to adopt it. There is the curriculum itself, which is the book, and then iReady, which is an online component. And that online component has standards of the current curriculum, of the, sorry, current grade level, but then it also has interventions, which is really, really great to kind of close in that gap, those gaps for those students. Let's see. In addition to that, online, there's a lot of parent support. That for elementary, that sounds amazing. We don't quite have that, however, there are letters and stuff that go to the parents that say, "Here's what your student is learning, and it's way different than what you learned, but here's how we're teaching it to them." And that's really, really nice for the parents to see kind of that progressive, like, "It's different, but it's okay, like, we're all going to get through it," kind of thing. In terms of the lessons, they are very rigorous, and they are, but they are scaffolded so that it's easy for students to access. They scaffold it at a level of rigor, basically, so that they can eventually get to that conceptual understanding. Once they get to that conceptual understanding, then they have that procedure like how we're used to math, where they're solving the problems and they're working through the problems, and then the applications where they're doing real-world problems, and they're working to how this math actually connects to what they're doing in the real world, not just inside of the classroom, which has been a huge, which is huge for middle schoolers. Also, in the curriculum, it gives about, it gives information about how to support all, a whole variety of learners. So, it gives you ELLs and different, how you can teach different levels of proficiency. For LRC students, there's hands-on activities, there's visual models. For our higher students, it has concept extensions, and then like asking them to really apply their learning and where else they might see this type of math outside of the classroom. Also, with, for those high learners, there's a lot of discourse questions that are provided to the teachers to get them thinking at a higher level and kind of make cross-applications to other subjects and kind of other content areas. In terms of the online stuff, the iReady, it gives us a diagnostic, and so it suggests that you take that diagnostic like 2 to 3 times a year, beginning, middle, and end of the year, and it gives a lot of really detailed information by domain. So, if a student is really, really good, let's say in ratios, they might not be so good in expressions, and it'll tell you where exactly they are. Maybe they're early 5th grade, maybe they're late 7th grade. It gives that variety of everything, so you know exactly where the student's gaps are. And then you can also see that per class, per student, per school, and you can see it per district. So, you can kind of, as a teacher, that's really nice to be able to see like, "How do my students compare to the rest of the students at our school or in the district or something like that?" And also, which is super helpful as a teacher, it kind of takes away a lot of the secretarial work of teaching and allows you to teach. So, it gives you grouping. So, if you're going to teach algebraic expressions, here are the students you should put here. But then maybe when you go to statistics, here's the groups of students you should put here. So, it's all of those hours of planning to do those groupings, like, it's gone, it's amazing. I can speak so passionately about this because I kind of unofficially piloted it with my students. I used only the book, and I saw amazing results. I have, my classes are kind of split up, so I have a class that has a majority of ELD students, I have a class that has of 30 students, 13 of them are on an IEP, and then I have an accelerated group. And all of my students are really able to access it. The part that I really, really fell in love with was my ELD kids, where they're really struggling with conversations, and they are naturally having mathematical conversations right now, and they're trying their hardest. It is outstanding to see them like really understanding and learning and asking and explaining, and something I've never seen before, and I've had these kids for 2 years. So, it's when I... With my higher-level kids too, they love numbers, they don't like understanding why they love those numbers. And so, it gets them to really think about it in a different way so that they can access that conceptual understanding from an outside kind of view and really, really understand why they're doing it. I feel like there was... Oh, and then I want to say one last thing. Using it, and then we took our math benchmarks, my students scored better than they ever have on the math benchmarks. I had the least amount of minimally proficient and partially proficient kids I have ever had, and I've had these kids, about 95% of them for 2 years. And so, that was absolutely outstanding to see like how great they really are doing with it.
Good afternoon. I don't know how I can follow that. Stephanie, if you don't approve this. My name is Amy Sullet, I'm the district gifted coach here in Scottsdale. It's my pleasure to speak to you today. In addition to the wonderful things that Stephanie just shared, I want to talk with you a little bit about the rigorous offerings with iReady and Curriculum Associates. I was especially impacted by the scenarios and the problem-solving investigations embedded within the questions, specifically of iReady. They offered error analysis, they gave our students the opportunity to determine, "Is there a problem? If so, what kind of problem? If so, what multiple ways will we solve this problem?" Through discourse, they were able to solve and analyze and evaluate those situations and problems to come to reasonable solutions, which are very, very critical for our learners. In addition, I appreciated the variety of questions that were offered within iReady and Curriculum Associates. It didn't just hit the recoller or reproduction questions. iReady really emphasized questions that emphasized strategic thinking, such as reasoning, developing a plan of action, applying more than one reasonable approach, and then extended thinking with making connections and extensions. Stephanie did a wonderful job of expressing to you that individualized path that is offered through iReady, and I can't emphasize that enough. In Scottsdale, we teach all learners, and all means all. And so, as a gifted coach, I'm very, very pleased to see, to see the acceleration opportunities that are available through iReady with that personalized path. And one final thing I think I can share with you is my excitement over the goal-setting opportunities. Getting kids really interacting with their own data, really taking ownership of, "How am I performing? Why am I performing this way?" And the data provided within iReady really allows students to have those actionable conversations to be intrinsically motivated for their own future success. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we can all agree we need to keep Curriculum Associates away from them so they don't try to hire them. Because they're ours.
Great ambassadors.
I'm going to invite Janine Hilton up to speak about Pearson.
Well, I'm going to start off with talking about the algebra and geometry curriculum. And we picked the Pearson books. One of the great things that we saw when we looked at all of the new books that we saw was how much different and how much more they actually looked at the Common Core and really looked at the goals of it and incorporated that into the books. Last time we purchased books, which was right as Common Core was starting, they pretty much put a stamp on the front of it that said, "This is Common Core," and that was about all they did. Where we could really see a big difference in, especially in Pearson, and we have had Pearson books before, but just in the way that the books were written. They've done a lot more investigations, they've done things with hooks at the beginning of a lesson to really help us draw our students in. They did a lot of project and problem-based learning that caused, that helps our students do that, really looking into things and really thinking about them and doing, and sticking with something. A lot of discovery-based lessons where in the past, it was always just, "Okay, here's the rules, let's do a bunch of work, you know, and see if you can memorize the rules and do the problems." This became more investig... These are, this is more discovery where the students learn the rules and discover the rules themselves, and some of that was really exciting because it's stuff that we've tried to do on our own, but now we have a resource that helps us with that. It also has really good modeling. It was called the Three Act Math, where it does the typical, "I'm going to show you, we're going to work on it together, and then you're going to do some," but it's really spaced out in the lesson, so you're not doing the easy one and then... out in the lesson, so you're not doing the easy one and then the students turn, and it's the hard one that now comes up in the lesson. So, they do a really, really good job of scaffolding and also allowing us to do that tier, that tier teaching. Same with, yes, in elementary and middle school, lot of different levels of teachings. You've got the intervention levels, you've got your on-level, and also advanced materials, so we can do that differentiation, even if it's just in the homework that we, that we give them. Okay, they has a great online component for the life of me, I don't remember the name of the online component for Algebra and Geometry, but it also does a lot of the things that we talked about. There's videos that if the student forgets how to do it and can come home and watch the videos. The videos are actually well-done enough. I do a flipped classroom where in, where my students' homework is that they have to watch a video at night, and in class, we do the, we do the lessons together. Though, the videos that are done in this, if you wanted to even do that in classes like this, they're well, they're done well enough that I think that you could incorporate a flipped-type classroom in your, in your classes. It delivered, the online components deliver instruction, they give practice for the students. You could actually assign the homework via online, and so they would be doing it online and get feedback immediately. And that's always one of the downfalls of giving homework, is if they did the first one wrong, they probably did the second one wrong, and the third one wrong, and the fourth one wrong, and there's no one to tell them, you've done all fourteen of them that we gave you wrong. And so, online homework programs allow them to go, mm, no, you did this one wrong, let's re-explain it before they move on to the next one. So that's really exciting. I'm especially excited about the fact that they have calculator activities, teaching the students how to use calculators, how to use the technology, that we have in our, we have calculators in our classrooms, we're getting other calculators in our classrooms, and we can use calculators on ACT, on ASY Merit, and so it's important that we're able to teach our students those, those skills of a calculator so that they have the best skills when they're walking into ASY Merit or ACT or SAT and all of those things. There was some talk that it might also be compatible with School City at some point, to where their test banks might move into School City, which means that our benchmarks could even be more aligned with what we're teaching than they are now. One of the questions that one of the committee members had asked was, what made the Pearson rise to the top? And I think the online resources were probably one of the biggest things. It was exciting to know that we were going to give the students technology and resources that would make their in-home work that they needed to do more productive for them instead of just kind of, this is what you have to do. The way the book was set up, nice and clear, there wasn't, sometimes you get books and they, because they want to make it exciting for the student, they've got a little box here that talks about this, and then there's a little box here, and don't forget this over here, and it, after a while, it just gets to where a student can't concentrate on what they need to know. And these books are very nicely laid out to where a student can follow it and their eyes aren't bouncing all over the place trying to take in too much information that's kind of scattered. And so we really liked how clear and the setup of the pages were. I think I might have talked about everything. Go quite as long.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. All right, Christine is gonna come up next and talk to you about rational reasoning.
Hi, my name is Christina Murray. I am from Desert Mountain High School, and I worked on the Algebra II textbook for the adoption. So, the main purpose of teaching math is to develop reasoning skills, problem-solving skills, and logic, and also enhance students' communication skills. So, we're developing students' cognitive abilities much to the same way that a young toddler tries to fit shapes into a fun toy. It's just that when we're trying to develop very abstract skills, we're using mathematics. So, rote memorization of math formulas and recall of procedures in a classroom does very little in developing those skills in a student, yet that type of perception of what a math, what learning math is kind of pervades our public. So, effective math curriculum actually helps teachers facilitate the development of mathematical thinking and understanding. Students engage in productive struggle and exercise their brains as they try to make sense of mathematical relationships, and not only find solutions, but explain what those solutions mean. So that's why, as a committee, we chose to make the quality of the content and the emphasis on developing conceptual knowledge and mathematical reasoning our type top-tier criterion when evaluating textbooks. When we evaluated a textbook, we would open it up and, you know, there are certain indicators that we can tell whether the content is quality or not. We would open up the book and look at inverse functions and how inverse functions were presented. Was it from a very procedural aspect, or were students actually learning the meaning of what an inverse function was? We would look at exponential functions. Was the book presenting students to look at what an exponential function meant by how the quantities covaried, or were they just being shown a formula? So, we looked at the quality of the homework and the word problems to determine whether problems focused mainly on math procedures or the development of reasoning skills and conceptual knowledge. The Algebra II Adoption Committee found that the Rational Reasoning textbook was the best resource to help teachers develop conceptual understanding. One teacher actually commented that they were surprised at how few textbooks actually developed conceptual understanding at that level. With Rational Reasoning curriculum, teachers can facilitate inquiry, discovery, and problem-solving through real-world scenarios. For example, students can learn about exponential functions by looking at a problem that has to do with bacteria growth or growth of a population in a city. Students are able to develop a deep understanding of exponential functions and linear functions by comparing a salary that grows by the same amount every year and a salary that grows by the same percent every year. And you can create all kinds of fun discussions as you ask students to predict who's gonna make more money in five years. So, this is also an example of how topics in the Rational Reasoning curriculum tie together so that students can develop big ideas throughout the curriculum. Covariation is a big idea. Understanding why certain math relationships are called what they're called is something that Rational Reasoning does very well in its book. We're most excited about the new online practice resource students will get to use with the Rational Reasoning curriculum. This new resource will support student learning at home and is an improvement from the online resources we currently have. Students will be able to go on and they can practice a problem, and if they want to practice another one, they just click a button and they'll have a similar problem come up, but with different numbers. Additionally, I'm excited for the professional development that we'll have as an opportunity with the Rational Reasoning curriculum. It is professional development that's actually transformed me and my career and my philosophies for teaching math. In the process of the textbook adoption, the textbooks we're choosing from were shared with other Algebra II teachers, so I took my textbooks back to Desert Mountain, and as a Algebra II PLC, we looked at the other textbooks and we compared them, we explored the online resources. And again, Rational Reasoning did go to the top because of the quality of the math content in the book. So, the Algebra II Adoption Committee gave the most Rubik points to the Rational Reasoning and selected this textbook as the best option because of the quality content in the book. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine. Okay. For our upper-level courses, they are all grouped in with the same publisher, so you can see that they're listed here for you. So we have Algebra III with trigonometry, trig pre-calculus, honors trig pre-calculus, and differential equations. Janine's gonna come up and talk to you about those programs.
And I'm excited to come up because I did forget to say one thing about the Algebra and geometry. And that was that we were really excited also about how much these newer books really increased the rigor. One of the things that I, in the old books, is they, in our standards, it talks about dealing with unfriendly numbers, but in a lot of our, the older books that we have, they were all very simple integers, very few fractions, very few unfriendly numbers, and the new books does really increase the rigor, especially when it comes to the statistics section of algebra. That was something that we really looked at, and we were really excited about increasing the rigor and being a little bit closer, being much more to the standards that we needed. So, I wanted to throw that in. The last ones are the upper-level books, and quite honestly, they were all, they're all good books when you get to that level. It was really exciting to listen to the actual authors talking about why they wrote the books and why they put them in that order, or why did they present it in, in the way that they did in the book, and, and that was kind of exciting because sometimes you're not sure how much involved the authors are in deciding how it's supposed to be taught. But the ones that we picked were all Pearson. I would say that the main reason is that they have that online component that was very well-done. It's called Math Excel. It's, the students, again, are able to do homework online, they have videos that, again, you could either use for a flipped class or just simply for students who were absent and needed extra help, or students who just, who didn't understand the concepts. So, that was really a big part of it, that we really thought that one, those were really good. We also liked in the Diffy Q book that they talk a lot about different programming, they talk about, a little bit in there about programming with MATLAB and GeoGebra, and so there was a lot of technology even based in the differentials book. We've used some of these books before, so we know the quality of the lessons and we know the quality of the plan and the way that the book proceeds, and so we've always felt that they were very good books, and so that was seeing those just improved upon and also gave us a reason to choose those. Really, it was, they were only a few books, and so each one, they were good books, but we kind of just went with, I think the reason we went with Pearson more than the others was, again, that the online component, we were comfortable with the way the lessons were laid out, we're comfortable with the rigor of them, the differentiation of them, the deep understanding of the concepts, and that, I think some of, one of them, the vocabulary's correct, they don't have some, you know, that we know that we liked the way the vocabulary was in them, and so those were a lot of the reasons that we chose those books. Don't have quite as much to talk about for those.
So, as you can see, we had some really good people on our committee, really, really energetic and people who really understood what was happening. I, I want to thank each and every one of them for such a productive committee. It's been a really serious commitment, and each of them took their roles and responsibilities very seriously, as you can tell. So you can see the recommendation, and you heard the vendors for each of them. Mr. Gad was able to talk about the funding sources and how that looked. We, this is it all broken down to the very end of it, of the recommendation, and we'll be bringing this recommendation to you for final vote in February, in February 12th board meeting. So, at this time, we'd like to answer any questions, either myself, or the district coaches, or anyone else on the committee, and our vendors are here as well.
Board Member Prelevarn.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the whole committee. I'm sure it was tremendous amount of work, and I believe there was a lot of curriculum, curriculum mapping work done even before you probably got to this point too, so thank you for all that work as well. So just two quick questions. As far as the, the time at the campuses where you were kind of sharing and getting input, how was that dedicated? Were these specific meetings on the campuses, or did you try and do it online? How did that look?
The teachers went back, the teachers that were on the committee went back and met with their campuses. We did not, unless they requested.
No, I just meant, on their campuses, were there meetings dedicated for them to get to share?
I think every campus arranged it a little bit differently. I've talked to certain people, and I don't know if you want to ask some of my committee members how they shared out their resources.
So it was different?
If anyone wants to share how it might have looked. But I know that some of them got some time in their staff meetings to share, some of them held meetings after school, they placed their resources in common areas where people could access them, some people brought back email responses when they came to our next meeting. So I think it depended on the committee member, how they collected feedback from their staff or what avenue they were given to do so.
All right.
For the upper level, a lot of the groups met within their PLCs. That's the feedback that I heard from them.
Also during the curriculum meetings, which were just parallel, that was a time for them to come together as well and have discussions during that time as well.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I noticed for the Pathways Algebra II, it said ten professional days required per year. And I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I only saw that in that, at that level.
That one, and the... Curriculum Associates also has a certain amount of PD required, and Sendage has talked to us about continual and ongoing PD, and so it's kind of a plan that I know that with our publisher, we set up independently, so it just is making sure the teachers have that support and continuing. I'll just hand them a book and be like, good luck.
Well, I guess that was my question, because, yeah, throughout, you see a need for, you know, there to be professional development, some training through it, I mean, if we're going to, it's gonna be implemented with some excitement instead of trepidation. They'll need that, but to see something that is required ten days a year, is that ten full days? I mean, I'm just wondering, has it already been figured out? How is that, are those teachers gonna be paid for that, that extra time? Is that gonna be built into their already PD days that they do?
All part of it, and once the approval comes through, then I'll be able to work with the specific vendors on what, how to make that happen. Remember also, we have teacher leaders on our campus, those teacher instructional leaders, and we'll appoint people on every campus who will be the trainer of trainers of sorts, and they'll do some of that training there, but through the specific vendors, we'll make sure that happens. We have, again, some time in the summer where we can do some of that training, but then to capture people back, and it's not a one-and-done, it can't just be in the fall, they need to use it, get their hands on it, come back to those committee, to those vendors and ask some more questions. I'm gonna be really honest, through this process, I have talked to these vendors often through email, getting some specifics, and they've been a hundred percent receptive and been able to answer questions. And even during the process where we've used some of these, and some of the people talked about, we've used some of these people already, they're able to be right online with us and answer as we go as well. So it's a specific to each vendor, really, what it's going to look like.
All right, thank you very much. Great work.
Any other questions? Board Member Cravis?
No, I just wanted to thank your team. I wanted to thank all the teachers that worked on this committee and the site leaders that worked on this committee, and all of the teachers that came here today and spent their time explaining the math program to us. Your enthusiasm for your textbooks was palpable, it almost made me want to take another math class at high school again. For me, I'm not a math person, but thank you. Thank you very, very much, because this, you know, without you and without the textbooks we're nothing, so thank you very, very much for all the time and dedication that you spent on this project. It's greatly, greatly appreciated.
Board Member Reber.
I would echo my colleagues' statements. This has obviously been a lot of hard work, and I'm very appreciative of the feedback and the process you went through. It's certainly a better-than-university-standard review of materials and approval of those. So I think you guys have done a lot of great work. Just a couple of very quick questions. The schools, is this being rolled out to all schools or just the schools named in the elementary, middle, and high school?
So every school except of our two traditional schools. So they work under with Saxon, and so that's a whole different ballgame, but every other school.
Except in the middle schools.
In the middle school and Saxon.
In the middle, right.
Middle school, they're gonna go with the rest of the district to help prepare kids for the high school.
Right, okay. For the, I mean, this is, this is really just for my own interest, for these homework helpers and these online resources, I mean, I know as a student, one of the big things was, for my homework in math, I mean, we would usually be assigned the odd-numbered problems and those answers in the back of the book, so the key was to show my work. Are these, these homework helpers and these tutorials, are they, if a student has a problem, say, at the elementary level and the parents are helping and they're looking at this, is that help directed at that specific problem, or is it just a general tutorial of how you should solve these types of problems, not filling in the, the other, the missing element of having the answer but not showing your work?
So, I looked at all of the programs, I looked at the program this week, actually, with my curriculum teams that I brought in, and we pulled up all the QR codes on the elementary, and what it does is it will bring up a short little video that explains how to do a similar problem. So they have a sample that shows all the step-by-step, because some of the methods that we're using in elementary is not quite the math that our parents remember, and so it'll pull up a little video that says, this is how it works, and it literally talks them through it in like a minute and a half. It's not the problem they see. It's not the problem they see, it's not any of the problems from the homework, but it's just re-explaining that strategy. So just reinforcing it in a way that the parents can see in live action and the students can see it in young live action. So ours isn't giving them any answers nor correcting any of their answers, and there's no answers in the back of the book, I don't think.
No answers in the back of the book?
It just is that little extra level of help. So we don't have people going, "I don't understand what these number bonds mean," or it just is an added level.
That's cool.
It's really cool.
So one last question then. I mean, these, these online tools sound great, especially because I have seen some of these math problems that even I am like, "I don't understand what, what is, you know, being done here," just because it has changed so much to be rigorous and higher level, which I think it is fantastic. I do think it's great. For these online tools, kind of a dumb question, is it mobile app based, I mean, can parents access it on their phones as well as computers, only because, you know, we might not have students or families that have computers at home or have access to the internet in that way? Is it, I mean, is it all multi-platform based, basically?
So with the high school, with the Pearson program, there's an app that can be downloaded and there's the scan and go. Scan the entire page of your book and it will bring you your resources to help you with that exact piece. For the Algebra II component, I think we have to ask if there is a moment, it's, you know, it'll pop up, so it can pop up on your computer as well.
And the same with the elementary. I mean, my iPhone photo, my camera scans the QR code and pulls me directly to the website I want to be at.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Oh, Board Member Meckl. Also echo, just thank you very much for all the time and effort that you put into analyzing the, all the curriculums and then coming up with the ones that you like best in the presentations today. I'm going to follow up, because that was my question, what about the students that don't have access to technology at home? Will you be opening up either the libraries after school or before school? So how, what are you going to?
I know most of the high schools have that, that ability. You know, the libraries open at lunch, there's some, there's hours that they...
Well, the high school, I'm thinking, you know, most kids probably have telephones. I'm thinking maybe, maybe middle and elementary.
And the elementary, all of it's consumables, so all of the materials they're getting, they'll have a hard copy up. So the, the online component for that portion of it is just basically an aid to say, in case you were struggling, in case you had a question. And if there are components that you can't sign online, I mean, that's going to be to the team of professionals to decide how they make sure that everyone has access to it.
That's the conce, they have consumables. Okay, through five?
If you can't sign online, you can also print it out. If you have two of those, it's a PPO.
Oh, great. Okay. All right, good.
That's just why our vendors are here.
Yes. That's why we're here.
Okay, quick question, or could you point out, I think it's fantastic, the PD that comes with it, and Ms. Redner, you spent some time with me discussing, I asked you a question about if we had our newer teachers and some of our more experienced teachers were somewhat familiar with pathways, et cetera. And you touched on the fact that almost every campus or something has instructional coaches that can kind of bridge that learning gap for those newer teachers. And wasn't it almost every campus, and then you were going to have some that would help with the ones that didn't?
So every campus has teacher instructional leaders. And so they're their point people and a different amount, and the principals assign those people. So there are point people and they'll be able to spread that out. I've got two math instructional coaches, so as much as I wish I could clone them, they're two for 29. And so we really look at the trainer of trainer model. So we look at those people. It doesn't have to be a teacher instructional leader, it can be just a math coach who, or a math teacher who they feel wants to take on that responsibility. Part of being on this committee was that they, they've been, as you can tell, pretty knee deep in this and they understand it. Those soft pilots, people also have really had their hands on it and they're starting to spread the word as well. We, I feel comfortable that we have people on every campus who will help us with that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So my question is to the board, can we put this on the consent agenda for Tuesday?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
I would prefer it not being on the consent agenda, given the $2.5 million in case that there are some people that might want to make public comment. But I think just having it as an action item, and unless a lot of discussion comes up, it gives the opportunity for discussion.
Noticing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was fantastic. Okay, moving on to information discussion items 3D, update on the 2016 bond and online project management software program. Why don't we take a five minute recess? I'm going to take a recess for five minutes. How about that? It's 4:58, we reconvene at 5:03. Okay, we are reconvening at 5:05 PM and moving on to discussion item 3D, update on the 2016 bond and online project management software program.
Good evening. Evening, yes, early evening. President Beckman, members of the board, Dr. Krikard, Sandra, and everyone that's stuck it out for us tonight. Dr. Krikard actually stole my thunder. I was going to come up and offer you guys to take a break, because I had rehearsed today and I'm at about three hours and 22 minutes, so buckle up, here we go. So the, I don't know if the title of my presentation is a little bit misleading. I do not really want to get necessarily deep into the weeds on individual projects. What I'd like to share with you guys tonight is the work that I've been doing to bring it all together in one place where we can reference, we being the board, the cabinet, even the community can see in one place where all the information is for the bond. So we have this program called Smart Sheet that was brought along some time ago. It lay dormant for a while and then we picked up that torch and started using it. And I think we're at a point now where we've got about 98% of the information here in Smart Sheets, and so here we go. So we're going to start in the beginning, where we started with the bond, to help people understand that, that it's just not as simple as, "Here's $229 million, go ahead and go spend it." So we had the brochure. Everybody remembers this brochure. It broke down the bond, the $229 million. Wonderful piece of work. Talks about school rebuilds, life cycle improvements, school learning environments, transportation, safety and security, and physical education and athletics. What do all those things mean? School rebuilds? Well, we're actually recognizing now that maybe it's not a rebuild, maybe it's a renovation, a heavy renovation, a renovation nonetheless. We have our life cycle improvements. All things wear out and break down. All things have a life cycle, whether it's carpet, whether it's paint, whether it's air conditioning, everything has a life cycle. And in a lot of cases, there's a lot of equipment out there, a lot of stuff that we work with on a day-to-day basis, it's just flat worn out and needs to be replaced. School learning environments. This one was classrooms, science labs. In the case of Cheyenne, where we built a gymnasium and two new science labs. In the case of Tavon, where they have an idea of some new buildings or some way to create a safer path across Osborne for those kids. The Tonalea K8 has some money in that learning environment for 21st century learning. So there's, there's about $21 million set aside in that area. Transportation, that's pretty well self-explanatory, safety and security. We're looking at front office remodels, trying to secure those front offices, so anyone coming in that isn't necessarily welcome on the campus, they'll be stopped at the front entrance. Classroom door hardware, fencing, different measures that will just make our campuses more secure. And then finally, physical education and athletics. The biggest one that we've all been focusing on in recent years has been the three and now four track and field projects that are completed with Desert Mountain in the, in the future. And then we have some tennis court improvements and some various things in that physical education arena, okay? So the, our document shows all those percentages that's identified in the brochure and all the dollars associated with that, making it up to that 229. Then we have the voter pamphlet. Voter pamphlet is a legal document. This is what we must adhere to. I believe there is a 10% gimme on this. If we needed to spend a little bit more on safety and security, or a little bit less on, on something else, we can do that. But generally speaking, we have to stay within the parameters of this bond pamphlet. Line item number one is renovate, improve, and construct school facilities, including major life cycle renovations, the district school facilities, furniture and equipment at $219,910. We'll look back at the, at the Smart Sheet and we'll see how that breaks down and how it correlates to the original brochure. Then we have school safety at $3,090,000. And then we have student transportation at $6,000,000. This is a document that we must maintain our efforts towards. We can't just disregard this. This is something that we, what is happening here? Sorry, maybe you're not seeing that. So you see that I took the, the items, the areas, school rebuilds, life cycle, learning environments that are reflected in the brochure, broke them down into the voter pamphlet at $219,910. And those numbers are ever so slightly different, they're not too bad. And then we're moving on to the project budgets. So once upon a time, the previous administration, previous director of building services, worked with the principals, worked with the community, and they came up with a whole list of projects that needed to be done throughout the district. As you can see in the, in the left column here, they're a little bit different than both the pamphlet and the brochure, but they're pretty close. They're pretty close to where we ultimately need to be. So I, I use this one kind of as my guide, the rest of it's just kind of legacy information. But it ties it all together in one place. You can see that I clicked on a link, took, took me to that. So now all the information's in one place, okay? So where does all this information come from? Basis for the bond. I've minimized a bunch of the lines. There's 392 lines of projects that make up the $229 million. All of these projects are something that someone historically spoke to someone else and agreed that that's a project that should be done in our district. As you all know, things happen, things change. A roof that maybe we didn't think we were going to need to do for five more years starts to have damage that wasn't there before, starts to accelerate, and we may need to move a project from left to right to make sure that it's getting done and we're taking care of our schools. So this list, and this is something that ultimately I'd like to, I've reviewed this with the bond oversight committee, and this is something that I'd like to share with them. So that they can see that all of the projects, and not only all of the projects, but all of the expenditures associated with those projects. So each week, we go through and we start accounting for those dollars. Every, every time vouchers are printed, we go through and we add it to the system so that we have an up-to-date real number for you each and every week. So we're working on this. You see that there's some dates that are, that are not there. Those are projects that just haven't been planned yet. We have to have conversations with principals, with staff, with the administration, with the governing board. When are we going to do this project? How is that project going to happen? Everything's on the books, we just have to plug it in where it needs to be, okay? So the end result is this document. Sorry. So I shared this with each of the governing board members earlier today. Sorry. And this is a summary of all the bond, at your fingertips. It has the, the amount of money allocated to projects, not necessarily projects that are underway, but all of the projects that have been assigned to a dollar figure. It has our current expenditures to date. That's as of this past Friday. Tomorrow, I'll put in another $2 or $3 million worth of vouchers. Then we have the Hopi, Pima, and Cherokee rebuilds on here. I could put all of the projects on here, but the dashboard would be so massive that you'd never get through it. And then I put the next steps, the things that are happening at Cherokee. So I tried to include the things that were kind of hot button issues that you could reference pretty quickly, without making a phone call and saying, "Hey, what's, what's happening here, what's happening there? When's the next meeting at Cherokee?" So then below that, there's been some conversation for quite a while about a plan. Where's the plan? Do we have a plan? Here's a plan. It's my plan. I don't know if it's the best plan, but it's planned. And it'll give you some sense of what it looks like projecting out the schools, the rebuilds, from year to year to year, how that looks. Now it's maybe someone else's job to say, "What is going to be rebuild number four? What about rebuild number five?" We need to make those decisions soon, but I also know that those decisions are, are very much contingent on a lot of other things. And things that, that kind of above my pay grade. The number of kids leaving our district, the number of kids trying to get them back to our district, will this help, won't it help? There's so many things that need to be talked about. But I wanted to give you an example, and that's really all this is, is an example of what it might look like if we were to proceed and engage in these rebuilds. You see that we've got Navajo in here, we're, we're working on Navajo, and my next item is going to talk a little bit about Navajo. And then beyond that, we have all the projects that have been assigned dates, and these are all life cycle, learning environment, and safety and security athletics. So it's the rest of the bond, other than rebuild. Not all projects, like I said, not all projects have been assigned. Some of those projects are contingent on some other decisions, how we do things in the district, how, how we do teaching and learning. I can't dictate that, I can only say this is the availability for the project. So each learning community has its own setup, and it's interactive for you to go through, look at it. If you've got a question from a community member, you should be able to find the information for them and be able to share it with them, okay? So we've got a busy, busy, busy spring coming up. The current track for Cherokee is three months of design, or I'm sorry, three months of community input, six months of design, three more months of city, town review, and then construction, which takes us to a shovel-in-the-ground timeline of December, late November, December. We like to take advantage of the, of the breaks to load up the heavy equipment, do the fencing, do all of that. So for those that were anxiously awaiting this summer, getting into Cherokee and doing that, I hate to disappoint you, but the appropriate design timeline is basically this time next year, a few months minus a few months. year, a few months minus a few months, to finish the design, the community, and all of that. So, with that being the case, we're going to load up on all of the life cycle projects, the athletic projects, the safety projects, and try and get a whole bunch of that stuff done this spring and into summer. We'll be coming back with exterior painting projects, the hardware project at Desert Mountain High School, the door, exterior door project at Desert Mountain High School, the front office remodels at, at nine campuses, and then following right on the heels of that in the fall, nine more campuses of front office remodels. When we had this incident at Laguna not that long ago, James Dorr, Debbie Spalding, and I talked, and we're going to do a little bit of a stopgap measure at all of the schools to get them to the point where they're feeling a little bit more comfortable to, to have card access at the doors to exclude people from getting to the interior of the campus. What else can I share with you? There is a lot of conversation that needs to happen in the coming months to help solidify this plan. It's here, it's got a lot of holes in it, and I need from you, the governing board, the administration, to kind of close those gaps for me. We're going to be busy this spring, so I won't bother you too much after this, except to approve some contracts, but it's really important that we start having those conversations to decide what's next. So, with that, I cut that down pretty fast.
Board Member Greenberg.
Thank you, Dennis. For those who don't know or who, who may be watching, Dennis worked the entire weekend to finish this up so that each of us, as board members, can meet with him before this meeting, which helped answer questions beforehand, and I'm very appreciative for that because there are very few people who enjoy working over the weekend that I am aware of. But then again, the Patriots won, so maybe there are a lot of people who are happy to have missed that. I think this is a very good presentation. I think this is a very good tool. I would personally say that this and the information concerning costs should be shared with the bond oversight committee and the public. It was my understanding that there were concerns about oversharing of information. My view is that, you know, without information, people may come to their own conclusions anyways, so if people are going to take the information we provide them and twist it or misunderstand it or misapply it, or, or perhaps identify things that we did not think of and raise them to our attention to address, you know, I, I think that's beneficial and also, you know, just what it is. Concerning the rebuilds and the schedule, I have used this trope probably too much now and tired it out. It would be my view that it's not the board's job to identify specific rebuilds and when they should occur, or refurbs, or the project timeline. I think that really is a job for the executive team and for the individuals in charge of the bond and construction projects to analyze what is our vision and what is our mission, to analyze demographics and student loss, to analyze needs at each of the schools, to analyze, you know, engineering and structural problems, all those things, and establish a proposal listing the schools that they believe need to be addressed and in what order, and to present that whole package to us as a single unit that we can then discuss and say, you know, how have you considered the demographics and how have you incorporated those? How have you looked at our vision and our mission and our goals for the district, and how does that fit in with the construction? And, and for them to defend that to us, and then to allow them to, to move forward with it, understanding that, as Dennis pointed out, things may change as time goes on and, and maybe a project does have to get, you know, switched around from what we set out and what we approved early on, or the timing of it. Just because, you know, we've, we have been a little back and forth on this, you know, I know that the executive team has created a rubric before that creates the order, and then we have created a rubric that creates an order, and then it's back and forth there. So, I think we should really, it would be my, my position that we should permit the executive team and the appropriate administrators to create that plan, present it to us as a whole, and for us to question it and approve it if we agree with it or, or not, and then get the ball rolling, really. That's, that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a few, just for clarification, and thank you for spending so much time with us. And again, you put a ton of work into this, and I really appreciate it. Your timelines, first, let's, let's talk about Cherokee a bit. There was, when I, I've attended all of the meetings, and I was a little unclear, there's two phases to it, as far as, obviously, we're in the planning stage and the community's being very involved, but where do you see that? How is that playing out potentially from a calendar perspective?
So, we actually had an extended conversation yesterday in the visioning committee.
Could you explain the difference between the community forums and the visioning committee?
Yes, absolutely. So, we're doing community forums at night on Mondays, and we've had three of them so far. And then there's another committee, we've dubbed it the visioning committee, made up of community members, the PV police chief, teachers, parents, there's a whole group of folks, 24 people, and they're being utilized to get into the weeds with us, to really talk about where this classroom goes in relation to that classroom, and how we want safety and security to look, and things like that. So, they're spending a little bit more time with us, more on a weekly basis, and they're getting into the weeds. They're helping us really figure out what's going on, what they want for their campus. So, we talked about the logistics of a rebuild versus a renovation. So, when you do a rebuild, typically, you're going to find some piece of dirt on the property that you can build a new building, big enough to push a whole bunch of folks over into that new building, and then tear down the old building, very much like we did at, at Pima and Hopi. At Cherokee, the architects have kind of plotted it out and think, well, if we do a renovation, a heavy renovation, then we will likely do three different phases. All of the phases will be back-to-back-to-back, still starting in December. If we do a rebuild, then it would be just a couple of phases, and again, still starting in December. So, the phases might be broken up by summer, then winter break, then fall break, or some combination of breaks where they can build, move, demo, build, move, demo, that kind of thing. So, the timeline regardless of rebuild or renovate is going to be about the same.
Thank you. Well, and then, so that kind of leads to the next question. You have plotted out just so loose if you were to get kind of the next prioritization of schools, which we haven't discussed yet. I know that you have it up here potentially, but it's important to note that this is shovel-in-the-ground date, right? That you had mentioned that the planning phase was what, six months before?
So, let's, let's use, let's use Cherokee as the example here in these first two lines. So, we started the design phase, which was really the community input phase in December, just before the break. I think it was December 10th. And so, that's going to carry us through April. I believe we're coming back to the board in April for an approval for renovate versus rebuild. So, then after that decision is made, then it's going to be six months of actual design work, working with the C Mar, trying to put it all together, and then, once that's done, the plans are ready, then it'll go to, for city or town review. And the town of Paradise Valley uses a third-party reviewer. We've already been working with, working through that process to make sure that, that goes smoothly. So, then shovels in the ground would essentially be that winter break of 20, of 19 into 20.
And you have, I know that you're doing a lot of projects this spring, as far as the life cycle stuff, so that leads you out to a hypothetical, but maybe a desired start time, once the schools are picked or whatever, of when? Like, when would the programming slash community meetings start in your estimation for maybe the next schools? When would be ideal?
For the next rebuilds?
For the next rebuilds, yeah.
So, there's a couple of key times. Obviously, we want the most participation during that community input time, so we don't want to wait until June because everyone's going to go on vacation. So, ideally, if we were going to, if we were going to decide to, to jump into another one, we would start the design process or the community input process here in the spring, because it's going to take us another year out. Now, if there's a decision that needs to be made that's outside of the scope of design and construction, well, that decision should come before this, before we start design, because clearly, we need to start design on a particular school. We can't just, you know, invite everybody, so that might be too fast, that might be too soon. Maybe it's, well, let's push it until after the summer and get started in the fall. Either way you look at it, you're looking at a one-year design period and then another 12 to 16 months of construction within that timeframe.
And you could start the design period with potentially two schools at the same time and for the design?
Um, we could. We'd need to, we'd need to really seriously talk about staffing at that point.
Just a minute, just a minute. I don't want a Tom Jacobson moment here, because the board is asking him to do something, he's going to say yes, even though it's a better job.
Yeah, and if you look at this, you look at this, we really, I don't have two going at a time. It's just, there's two that, they overlap, but they're not identical timeframes, because each takes a different amount of my time, my staff's time, so to put them back-to-back on top of each other, I think that's a conversation we'd have to have with Mr. Gad about where that, that money's coming from. Are we selling bonds at that point to be able to piggyback two schools at a time?
While at the same time, you have 300-plus projects.
Right. And, and that's something that we just can't forget. We, we can't forget that there's a whole bunch of other things, roofing projects, parking lot projects, and all of them have a certain timing. You can't do parking lots during the school year, you got to do that during the summer, so there's these ebbs and flows of how busy we are during certain times of the year.
And you have two design, your community groups discussing a, a school, and if you can't build them both at the same time, you're going to have a hurry-up-and-wait situation, where you've been engaging the community and maybe you're all ready to go, but then you can't because you can't.
And, and we really don't want to do that.
No.
We want to time it when the time is appropriate. So, if there's a, let's just say, for instance, if there's a year that we need to make a decision moving forward, well, then we reassess the schedule and then set the schedule accordingly. So, regardless of your desires, I'm certainly going to tell you that, eh, you know, that's okay, but no, not really, because there's a lot. I, I take, a good for instance is our project at Desert Mountain High School for the locks and hardware are, one of our senior locksmiths helps manage that project, because he's got 36 years of locksmith experience, and there's no one in the country that has better experience and better knowledge than he does. We use Greg Skelton on a lot of the outdoor projects, all the grounds projects, with 38 years of experience of running projects, but we can only do so much with these folks without absolutely burning them up, so.
Because they have day-to-day.
Responsibilities as well.
As well, Rick and, and Rick.
Yep. And even if we were to bring on a outside consultant, a project management firm, God forbid the price that we're going to pay, but the, they're still going to come to us for answers. They're still going to come to us, we're still going to be involved. So, we just need to be cognizant of, of spreading ourselves so thin, and the dollars. If we're, if we're $30 million flush right now and we've got $20 million committed to Cherokee, that only gives us 10 million to spend. That means at some point in the very near future, we're going to have to go out and sell another set of bonds. So, that's not my arena, that's Mr. Gad, and he can tell us whether or not it's going to affect the tax rate, or selling too early, selling interest rates, all of that. That's, that's not my thing.
Board Member Greenberg?
Yeah, I, two things. One, I mean, I think if you look, I know that Dennis said that this is just kind of a, you know, speculative, it's not set in stone, but I think it does kind of paint a nice picture, if you scroll through it, of the different builds and kind of those timelines. And again, I know that says, you know, type rebuild there, but as was discussed in our meeting, you know, that determination of refurbish or remodel versus complete rebuild, you know, that's, that's determined in that kind of three-month community period discussion. So, you know, it isn't so much that we're, you know, if we allow them to prepare a comprehensive plan and bring it to us, it's not that we're saying this is for certain being rebuilt. What it's saying is, this is the next project, and this is the timeline for that, and the discussions on, you know, remodeling or rebuilding are going to happen then, and it's going to move in that kind of orderly fashion. I, you know, I just view it as, you know, Apple's board does not sit around deciding what stores to close and what stores to open. That's a decision by the executive team, and, and then they have to defend it. So, I, I mean, I think it would be nice to, to allow, as I say, the executive team to do that.
I'm a little confused. Why do you think the executive team has not been allowed to do that? I feel like our board has been asking.
Or, or, I mean, that might be the case. I'm just saying, I think there's, whatever the case may be, I think there's, there is some confusion or miscommunication or, or something. It's not that anyone's at, at fault or one way or the other. I'm just saying, because he, because Dennis is saying that discussion and, and what that is, we should allow that discussion, allow the team to, to do that full comprehensive plan and then, and deal with it, only because, from my memory and from my recollection, we decided on Cherokee, but then we now have rebuild number four, rebuild number five, rebuild number six.
Well, remember, in that mix, we have schools that have been given a two-year timeframe to increase their enrollments and bolster their programs, which does affect what gets rebuilt.
Well, but I think that's, my point is that that's for.
So do.
Well, but I think that's, should be taken into account as one of the, as should, you know, as Allison and Dennis just pointed out, you know, tax, you know, tax rates and ta, all, all those things in those schools, I think that is for them to take into account, build that plan, come to us, and we get to go, why, 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 and annoy the heck out of them, and then, you know, approve or deny it, but that's what I mean, just because I, I think going rebuild by rebuild by rebuild, it isn't, it isn't something that I personally fully get. I mean, I don't know why we.
You'd rather, you'd rather have a full plan.
Well, I'd rather have, yeah, a general.
And I would, I would say, I don't, I don't think, I don't feel, speaking for the rest of the administration, that, that we've been hindered of anything, we've been concentrating on the Cherokee thing and Navajo, and then what may happen in the fall, but, but I think we would, we would welcome the charge to say. fall, uh, but, but I think we would, we would welcome the charge to say, bring back a more comprehensive plan. I think, uh, we, we've been, we've, we've certainly been talking and thinking about some parts of that, um, and, and I think if we could do that, I would want a little bit of time, I mean, not, not by Tuesday night, but...
No, 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 not at all.
And that's, I think we discussed...
But I do.
Asking Dennis at some point, when it's realistic, to bring forth what he sees and Mr. Gad and the people that would be involved as the next group of rebuilds and at what timeframe. And then we would discuss it and see if we agreed and go over the merits of what you've brought forth. Is that...
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we can do that. And so that we're also clear, this would, this would take, uh, has to take into account the schools' ungrowth plan, that where they are involved, um, our overall demographic picture, what that's involved, uh, and so that we would be, we would have to be, be putting this jigsaw puzzle together as, as, as best we can to present and maybe with some options.
Mr. Gad?
Just a couple of observations, having been through a few of these before. Enrollment planning is critical, so that we try to pick the best options for the district's long-term enrollment needs. You don't want to spend this kind of money in places that will not support the enrollment that ultimately is there. I mean, that's just not the way we do it.
And I also think it would be, it would be good for the community to have a plan where certain schools are put into the queue, whether the timeline, just to, to kind of calm the waters a little bit, where everybody right now is really nervous what's going to happen to their school and there's, it's an unknown. And the more that we can set out known, within all of these parameters, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm not suggesting this is going to be simple, but, but I think it would be good for the community to be able to have some things finally to be able to say, yes, okay, some, some decisions have been made. There, there is a queue for the rebuilds, there is, there is timeline, we know for the growth plans, um...
Well, we also have a very recent demographic study...
And the demographic.
Which, of course, for our new board members and community members, we need to make sure is, is out in front. And, um, going way back, not that far, but we have the FNG reports of our life cycle plans, which lay out really the overall health of each one of our campuses.
And we actually have two, two different...
There's been a lot of data gathering in the last few years.
The matrix was used twice and pretty much came up with the same, but still to, to look at, at those as well.
Been building to this moment.
Well, and it's a comprehensive discussion, and I would agree with Mr. Gad that enrollment is a critical piece, but so are many other things like programs, et cetera, trajectory for our elementary schools as they get to our middle schools and our high schools with those programs. So there's a lot to be had in this discussion, certainly something that we're not prepared or should be having tonight. But I would ask personally that we maybe, when it's a reasonable timeframe, have this discussion. And jump, has a starting point, touch on what you see, you know, and the people that are deeply involved in this, and what you see is reasonable? Because it is large with many factors that you all know and have discussed in the past.
And to be fair to, to everyone, um, I look at things through this lens, the, the facilities lens, um, and I don't necessarily get involved with where Mr. Gad is and I don't get involved with the curriculum. And so, I know that our facilities are in desperate need. I'm going to advocate for us doing something to those facilities. With the, the assistance of all of these really smart people, hopefully, we can come to a plan that says, this is what we're moving forward in Scottsdale schools, so that we don't have schools that are a problem, so we don't have schools that are in the press because of this, that, or the other. Uh, I would like nothing more than to see another ceremony like Hopi, uh, that we had last night with people very happy with what they ended up with. So, for me, it's a little bit selfish to move things forward, because working on your old junker all the time can be very difficult, very taxing for our staff. So, we want to, we want to move that conversation forward. But we also understand, absolutely understand, that there's a lot of other things that play a part in that decision. And if that decision is, well, you're not going to rebuild it, you're going to do something else with it, that's all I need. That's all I need.
Board Member Becca?
Well, I, I, thank you for that, Dennis, and I think that, I can speak for a few of us, because we've been on the board for, for two years, we understand the roles. I think that, uh, uh, Board Member Greenberg hit on it. It, it's, it's a team effort, right? It's a district team effort. There should be an executive design team that, um, you know, meets, has agendas, has minutes, that talks about what you're doing, what you're coming up with, and comes up with a comprehensive plan. And I think that, I know personally, as a, as one board member, um, I am all for going forward and getting that plan together, um, look forward to seeing it.
I agree. I think our community is really asking for it. And we have the end of the year approaching and parents making decisions, and this does weigh in the future of their school. So, yes, while you're a busy guy and you have a lot on your plate, whenever it's a realistic timeframe, I would like to see your opinion.
We'll, we'll talk.
Dennis is just one of the team, right?
Just one, no, 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 of course.
That's the point.
There's so many down to this plan.
Right. It's not, no one's asking that of you, so we don't, I know that you're looking...
I'm not afraid to make a decision, but, you know, there's some other people that might get a little upset about that decision.
We know how busy you are.
Right. And I will, I'll speak from the past because I've been around the longest and been talking about a district plan for ten years in this district. So, um, I would encourage us all, though, as, I mean, obviously, I totally agree that it is our administration leadership team and our leadership at our sites that needs to be a part of this conversation. They've always needed to be a part of that conversation. But having that conversation with administration, with the board, is beneficial because that's transparent. And those discussions and those re- and that reasoning and that logic and the data and facts coming to the board and having that discussion transparently is a much better scenario, in my opinion, than in the past when backdoor committees would make decisions and then bring out a recommendation to the board that no one, including the board, but also the community, had not seen how they got to those recommendations. And what you had was community just backlash going, where's the logic here? What, how did you get here?
So you want us to show the work?
That does not go, show your work.
The agenda's...
Is what we need. I, I just don't want to go back to those times, because that wasn't pretty.
So, the model that we used this past year with the demographic study, with the, with Dennis's proposal, with the math adoption, of, of, of meeting with pairs of, of board members, when we are at that point that we, we think we're going to recommend this, let's get your input then, and you hear it works, so that when we come, whether it be a study session or a regular board meeting, when we come forward, uh, many of, of your opinions have been incorporated as well as everybody else's, and we do come together as a team. Okay?
Mr. Gad?
One comment with the declining enrollment this district has had in the past. I think that it's key, one of the criteria, has got to be a marketing point of what facilities, where are you dealing with magnet schools, which tends to be frequently used marketing tactic? That needs to be a part of this, because there's, that's something that's extremely significant for the long term, as to where that enrollment goes. Is the facility in the right place and could we do something in, in the build/rebuild process to create that as a focus school for more and more parents to become interested in that might come from outside the district with their children? That's, that's an important component.
Huge component.
So I think, I think that goes to the team effort.
Yeah.
You know, with the experience that you guys have, I'm sure that we will get to a good and fair result. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or discussion on that date? On the online project management software program?
So, each of you should have gotten that, that dashboard? If you didn't, please reach back out and let me know, and, because that's probably only the third time that I've actually shared out, uh, one of these. So if there was any problem in transmission, let me know and we'll make sure you get it. Okay? Thank you.
I think you did, you emailed a link, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I remember seeing, yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item three E, Navajo Elementary School Facilities Rebuild Update.
Last week, well, I guess, let me start a little further back. The trust has been working now with CRS, Comprehensive Risk Services, was the contractor of choice for the Navajo Phase Two, which is essentially the, the asbestos abatement, uh, demolition of all of the materials that will not be left in the building. And as they're going through the process, they're identifying areas that the trust will cover under insurance and areas that they will not cover. They, their responsibility, their role, is to restore it to its original. So if it wasn't affected by the fire in the A, B, or C building, then they have no responsibility for that. And I, the best example I can give you is the floor tile in the A wing. Floor tile in the A wing, got some soot on it, they could quite simply mop that up and off they go. Now, that's not a big-ticket item, it's actually a very small item, um, but do we want to send the kids back to that school with asbestos still in the school? Ultimately, I'm requesting that we not do that, that we get rid of all the asbestos, and then what, uh, the result is, is that ultimately, we have to do some more work. We have to do more work to the building. So, um, I sent, I believe Sandra got out, um, this memo that I had sent to Mr. Gad and Dr. Krieger last week, or almost two weeks ago now, I guess, and it outlines the scope of work for the trust. So, rather than read this verbatim, A, B, and C wing, all things porous, carpet, ceiling tile, ceiling tile second layer, because there were two layers of ceiling tile in that building. All of the contents, the books, the, the stuff, the little teddy bears, all of that stuff, gone. They're taking, taking all of it out. The trust went through and they took pictures, literally in two-by-two segments of every classroom, of everything that was in the classroom. And they're going to come up with a number to reimburse the district for all of that. They're going to pay for all the curriculum that was in all the cubbies and on all the shelves. They're going to give us a number to do a full replacement. The carpet can't stay. They pull the carpet, oh, there's asbestos tile underneath it. Well, they got to take and deal with that as well. So anything that the trust is taking out, it's their responsibility to put back. But if they're not taking it out because it wasn't affected by the fire, then what do we do? Do we leave it and just stay with the insurance money? Or do we move a little further along and, and replace it and have it when they come back to A, B, and C that it's, it's a, it's a whole school, it's a whole repair? So, um, the mechanical engineer, all the ductwork has to go. The electrical engineer, all the electricity, the panels, the conduit, all the wiring, low voltage, high voltage, intercom data, all of it has to go. So, when you walk into that building now, you can't yet, because there's still asbestos in it, but to see it, it is a gutted building. The A building is completely gutted, floor to ceiling. So, they're going to have to do some put-back. But there's one little section of tile that they're not doing here and one little section of tile that they're not doing there. And that repeats itself in the B building and the C building. So, working down to their proposal, right now, they're, they've got a six-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-dollar investment in their work, and that is just cleanup. That's just abatement and demolition. That is not their build-back number. They have not finished the design and therefore they have not quoted that work yet. During their bid process, they worked through the items that were not part of the fire damage. And the contractor, uh, put that, those as add alternates, and I've identified those here in the, um, in the rest of the memo. So, we've got about a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-dollar commitment to take care of those things that are not included in the trust's work. In most cases, it's doors, floor tile, and the demolition of the mechanical equipment. During the October sixteenth board meeting, there was talk of, let's look into the mechanical system, let's look into the front office, safety and security for the campus. So, remember, once upon a time, I said, these buildings were on the rebuild list for a reason. And the mechanical equipment is mostly original, there's a few pieces of equipment that are eighteen years old, all well beyond their life cycle or very much reaching their life cycle. So, we're looking at a one-point-one to one-point-four-million-dollar budget for an HVAC replacement on that campus. Now, keep in mind that the trust will take care of the cost of the ductwork. The trust is tearing it out, the trust will put it back. Put a piece of equipment, they can wipe it down, sanitize it, and leave it. But do we want to do that and leave it in place for it to fail on the second day of school, when we take people back? So, um, flooring, paint, there's a whole host of things. Did you guys actually get this in time to actually see it?
I did.
Okay. So, um, interior paint, what the trust won't take care of, flooring replacement, what the trust will not take care of, all of those have been itemized based on projects that we've recently done, so they're good, solid numbers. The mechanical number's a good, solid number, we feel that we're pretty confident with that one. The one number that I left out was the window and window frame replacement. So why, why replace the windows and window frames, Dennis? The caulking around the window frames is asbestos-containing. Okay? So the windows are an aluminum frame, most of the windows are plexiglass, some of them are actually glass, and their energy rating is abysmal. So if we're going to put new HVAC equipment in, do we put new windows in? Uh, I know of at least one teacher at Navajo that will, um, hunt me down if I don't put windows in that building. So you may see a resignation, depending on your decision.
Start running.
Um, so, there's, you know, it's one of those things that, I know that Navajo is in that, that predicament of, of, uh, students and growth and needing to do what they need to do to, to become a viable school. But from my perspective, again, my lens is here, it's facilities, and I have to take care of these things long-term. So no matter what happens to Navajo, two years down the road, three years down the road, four years down the road, the work that I'm asking be done is work that, no matter what function that building is, unless we're tearing it down, but that would be kind of silly, because we just told the trust to, to put a bunch of money into it, it's necessary work. So, um, probably not what a lot of people want to hear, spending more money on a school that's, that's, uh, got very small enrollment, um, but I think it's the right thing to do. I think that long-term, from our facility perspective, we need to improve that facility. So, what does that do to the timeline? Dr. Krieger has said from the very beginning that we're looking at... Dr. Krieger has said from the very beginning that we're looking at a December return to the school. I have no evidence to tell me otherwise, that we'll get in there any sooner, whether we do this work or don't do this work. Would I love very much to get them in sooner? Sure. And I'll do a lot of work to try and make that happen, but the commitment still is December of 19. So I believe we...
So on Tuesday, we'll be bringing an action item for you to approve, $4 million from the bond.
Bond.
To do this work at Navajo. I, please correct me, I know you're not shy to do that if I'm wrong, but I thought we had said in October, mechanical and safety, between three and five million, perhaps. Does that ring a bell with those of you that were here before, remember? Regardless, Dennis has laid it out, so we'll be bringing that and give you more time from now to Tuesday to look more at that and ask any other questions that you have for the work that Dennis is recommending as part of that restoration of Navajo.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just, I have...
Board Member Cravitz?
1.1 to 1.4 million, that is for the HVAC unit?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a full mechanical equipment replacement. So when we went to evaluate that, just for your own information, they're chillers, it's a central plant, there's actually three of them, chillers push cold water through the building, through fan coils, air handlers. When you put a pipe wrench on those pipes for the chiller, it will literally fall apart, like paper mache. Any kind of pressure, and it's not all the piping, but it's in a lot of areas. We tested several areas, and it's just, it's reached its life cycle, and that's why, you know, it was on that list originally. So once we start touching stuff, they start tipping over the cabinets in the classroom and discover that there's some friends in there, tearing apart the cabinets. So it's, it's just, you know, it's just a lot. You start touching it and it just turns into a mess.
Board Member Beckham?
I'm not correcting you, because I haven't gone back to October, but I was the board member who brought it up, because I was fearful of just going in and doing just whatever the fire hit, and then the rest of the school might be falling apart, and so it didn't seem like, make sense. So I believe the charge was, I think it was a much lower dollar amount, only because we had, I had no idea what that dollar amount would be, so I just, at the moment, picked something out of my head, saying, we need to go back in and do the analysis and come up with a dollar amount. And that's what you've done, so thank you. And so, understanding that this is, this goes to the last conversation, this is just the facility part, and I am in support of doing the additional facilities, from a facility standpoint. But what we don't have, which is, I guess, the charge up to the administration team, is to come back and look at the finance side. Do we have the $4 million in the bond, given the other expenses we have already either promised or anticipated in the next six, seven months, up until, because you said, December? You know, I don't think we have to go out for another bond, but I would like to see those finances. I'd like to find out about what you mentioned and what Board Member Greenberg mentioned, you know, the enrollment, the demographics, the marketing, the programming. I mean, give us a synopsis of what you think, should this money be spent on a facility standpoint, given those other items? I think that would be helpful, because that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree necessarily with Board Member Beckham on that. If, if I'm not mistaken, one of the ideas floated, and I'm not sure if that's an idea that we agree with or not, but one of the ideas floated was that, by essentially setting up Navajo for success and doing this, and doing it now, there is the potential that it could delay a rebuild until another, you know, because it was one to rebuild, set things, and could therefore, almost act in a sense as, you know, I'm with you, you know, I think that the originals, I think what you originally asked for was front office and safety as a focus, and, you know, we didn't have that. You know, even if this strikes us as, ooh, four or five million upfront, if the original plan was, well, we might be remodeling or rebuilding for 15 to 20 million, now we don't have that, plus we have the Trust money, and we're really giving a new face to this school, you know, new windows, new tiles, new carpeting, you know, things with critters in them and friends removed. So I think that was one of the ideas, that actually, in the end, there could be a monetary benefit in this, so. But anyways, yeah, sorry. Thanks.
Dennis, when we met, you gave a wonderful affirmation, and that, kind of a jumping off from that, you know, you talked about the amount of money that the Trust potentially was going to put into the school, and this additional $4 million, and we asked you the question, what did you think in your observation that bought us, in the longevity and the life of the school? And certainly, to respond to your point, that it did, potentially, for this $4 million, you know, out of pocket now, potentially kind of take us to maybe another cycle, then in the future, like a couple decades, right?
Yes.
Which, this was on the rebuild list anyway. So yes, I would like to see the finances, you know, behind it, from an actual standpoint, but if we had earmarked $20 million for schools, and this is potentially $10 million from the Trust and $4 million from us, we're not that far off. I mean, at least it gets us the ball down the line a little bit, and we get, you know, we support the school. I don't know, I'm not making a case for it, I'm just saying, I would like to see the numbers behind it, because it is somewhat compelling.
Board Member Cravitz?
There's been a lot of discussion going on. Again, and I'm not against, I'm not, my comments aren't related to putting money into the school or not, but again, it has to be part of the larger conversation about what happens in the Granite Reef corridor, because I said it several months ago, we have under capacity, under enrollment and overcapacity, and we've known that, and that's where the two-year plan came in. So right now, I believe this is a 40th-day enrollment number, they had 342 students. That building, I think, the other day, when you said it holds 700 students?
Could easily hold 700. The one thing that we've noticed, we, you know, we started doing the School of the Week site box, and we've done Holcom, Kiva, Pueblo. Today, we did what we term as Nav-a-oke, just to give them some attention over there. And unlike a lot of school districts that I've been with before, there's a lot of space being used by special programs, by other things, and that's something that it's hard to, when you're looking at the hard-line number of this capacity, what about the OTPT that needs a big space? What about the reading resource teachers that don't have a bunch of kids, but where do you put them? You start breaking up classrooms and things like that. And so, obviously, that's something else that has to be considered in a space that, yeah, they've got 300 kids, but they also have all these other programs. So it's a difficult conversation, one that I don't really even want to participate in, just tell me to go. But when we walk the sites, even for my guys, the guys that are in the buildings all the time, for us to focus on a school and walk through that school, and then we regroup afterwards and say, wow, we didn't really realize that, because we're in and out of buildings, we're trying to get work done, and we took the time, these last four weeks, to really walk the buildings and look at all of their problems. But then, while we're looking at the roof leak and the plumbing that doesn't work and all of that, we're seeing that, wow, this room doesn't have any kids in it, but yet there's this setup in here, and someone must be using it. So it's just something, you know, an observation that I've had over the last four weeks, that I don't know that can always be about the capacity.
Well, and to that point, we need to understand the definition of what the capacity is, because if it was done in 1960, when, let's say, HOPI was revealed, and I can relate to it, because I was, well, I wasn't born in 1960, just saying, 60 was. But I went to school back then. We didn't have OTs, we didn't have PTs, we didn't have assistant principals, we didn't have social workers, we didn't have a lot of, you know, the special needs that we have, we did not have. So I'm, it kind of brings up a good point. What is the definition of capacity? Is it a modern definition? Or is it the older definition, just based upon, you know, gen ed students, or does it include all that? And maybe that is something that, and that's where the administration team would come in, right? And be able to, they would have analyzed it and said, even though it's not, we need this much extra square footage because of these additional services we provide, and we're providing them in all of our schools, so maybe we look at capacity a little bit differently, maybe in two different definitions, too. And then we decide, is Scottsdale what do we want?
Board Member Greenberg?
Yeah, just very quickly, I do appreciate that. I think one thing is, you know, these are schools that are trying to build this up, and as Mr. Gad rightfully points out, there's a big marketing aspect to that, and there's a lot to it. What I do think is, unlike some of the other schools that are on this kind of two-year improvement plan, Navajo is at a separate campus that is not its home, it's not even in its learning community, and it is, I can understand that it would be very difficult for them to try and recruit new students during this time, and so to then move them into a school that, you know, is partially facelifted and partially not, might not help, might not help their case in trying to attract those students.
Can I just make one quick comment, and then I'll be quiet? We have marketed our schools. If you go into Board Book, and I can, I was in there last night, going through past years, there have been plans that were enacted. So it's not like these schools never had a marketing plan before. We've had them, they've been enacted, some schools have been more robust in perpetuating their marketing plans than others. There was actually even a plan, and I, so I think the initial plan for Navajo, Ametsstein program, maybe it was called STEM back then. Unfortunately, I can't bring up the presentation from a few years ago about the marketing plan that we had for our schools, but I would encourage you to go through it, and if I can find it, I will send that information and let you know exactly which year and month that was, because it was within the last, I'm going to say the last six years or so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Moving on to discussion item three F, Superintendent Search. The Board will discuss the status of the search that was initiated in 2018 and discuss plans for continuing the search.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Krieger, and all. I don't have a presentation for you, but I came up here because I can't see you sitting over there. So we put this on your agenda after it was requested as a future item. Just to remind you and everyone who might be listening, we started a superintendent search last year with the search firm of McPherson Jacobson. They presented the Board with five phases of their search. The Board, the district, got through three and a half of those phases, leading up to candidates, top candidates, for the position of superintendent, and the search firm presented those candidates in an executive session with some video interviews. At that time, the Board chose not to go forward with naming any finalists, and left it kind of for the Board coming in to decide what to do next. So I have some information for you about what we have spent so far. This purchase order and contract are for a total not-to-exceed amount of $36,900. The total for the contracted services is $24,900, and then the expenses on top of that are not to exceed $12,000. So those two figures together, the 24-9 and the $12,000, total a not-to-exceed of $36,900. We have spent the half of that 24-9 contracted services in the amount of $12,450. I did ask McPherson Jacobson to send me any updated expense invoices that they might have outstanding. I don't have those yet, but I expect that there should be some, because they did do some traveling, and we were not billed for that as far as the records that I got from our purchasing department, yet. So we've spent about half of the contracted services, and then we have the amount and the expenses left as well. So it is not required that you do anything with the McPherson Jacobson contract right now. You could decide not to do anything with it right now, and then decide later whether you want to go back out to bid for the service at a later date, or if you want to continue with McPherson Jacobson at a later date, if you decide to pick up the superintendent search at a later time in the school year, next school year. You can, I gave you an action item, if you do decide that you want to cancel that contract, you can do that. We would owe whatever remaining expenses there are, I don't have that figure for you today, I apologize, and we just would need to issue them a notice of cancellation, it's a 30-day notice of cancellation on the contract. Your, some of your options, you know, the Board did have a discussion that they mentioned in public last December with Dr. Krieger about his willingness to stay on. You have the option of having that discussion with him. I have drafted a notice for you to have an executive session with him next week before your regular Board Meeting, if you want to do that. And like I said, you can choose to put the McPherson Jacobson search on hold, if you want, and they have indicated, we haven't had any concrete discussions, because you need to make a decision, but they have indicated that they are willing to kind of pick up where they left off, so that you don't lose the money that you've spent, and continue a search at a different time. You know, typically, a good time for going out to search is early spring, starting.
Without an increase to their total?
Yes, without an increase to their total. Thank you, Dr. Krieger. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer questions or just allow you to discuss among yourselves what you'd like to see happen next with the superintendent search.
Any questions?
I would like to hear from our new, I'd like to hear from our new board members, because we kind of put it out there, and it's, you know, it's the new, so I'd like to hear from you, which you're all thinking, you kind of know where we were.
Well, you know, I should have thought of it earlier, but I did request to view the executive session in December, and I did not have the opportunity to do that yet. However, you know, the two options, as it appears now, seem to be canceling it, as Michelle, Ms. Marshall pointed out, which then we would owe what we owe, or suspending it, and if it's my understanding, then we just, they will start over, should we like them to start over, from where we are, and then we would just have the remainder, the cost of the remainder of the contract, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't know how they were, and I know we can't get into the details of that without going to executive session. Board Member Cravitz?
Well, are we discussing F, which is our superintendent's search, or A, the F?
F, yeah, three F's.
It's connected.
You can discuss both, yes.
I couldn't make sure, sorry.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification, but yes, you can talk. Yes, thank you for that clarification, but yes, you can talk.
So I, without being privy to the details of how they were and how, you know, the results you feel that you received, I have no idea whether we would want to cancel them completely or to use them again. It does seem to me that it's a good deal, potentially, if they were adequate and they did a fair job, given some parameters, that we would not waste the money, if I put it that way, and that we could start over the search again at some point, and then just owe the remainder of the contract. But I suppose, I know you passed it to me, but I would like you to weigh in too, within the guidelines that we're allowed to discuss.
Board Member Greenberg?
I'm confused about your question because I thought it was, what did you see? I thought things more, not so much about McPherson Jacobson, but more about what you envisioned for superintendent search.
Well, I was opening it up just to them first before we spoke. I didn't mean that we wouldn't see, but I just meant... But I think Michelle started with McPherson and Jacobson, and I think that's why it moved there.
Yeah.
Versus F that talks about superintendent.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I agree with Patty. I don't have too much to add. I mean, I would say, in watching those meetings with McPherson Jacobson, there were certain things brought up that were not included in our original contract with them, if I'm not mistaken, certain add-ons like community, I could be completely wrong, but kind of like those community forums.
No, those were...
Were those included? Okay, so if those were included, you know, the only thing I can say is from what I experienced with them, at the, kind of the little, the learning community sessions where we would, you know, people would, they would ask questions. Sorry, not, that's not, I don't want to confuse those community forums with the kind of candidate community forums that they were discussing. If I recall, there was a question of how can the public interact more with, you know, that finalist selection, the five, five, you know, the final five or four people? And they said, well, it's not included, but, you know, some districts choose to do forums with those candidates or something to that effect. But regardless, at the initial community forums, you know, I thought they were, they were, you know, professional and good, and I attended the one at Arcadian, I attended the one at Coronado, and, you know, there was some very good input, similar input at both of those, but good input. So, but again, it is difficult for me to assess without the...
So can I circle back, Sandy, or Board Member Cravitz, to your point, discussing the search in general, obviously, you know, we need to say, are we continuing the superintendent search right now? And, you know, that's obviously a discussion because that's what F is. We're going to discuss the status of the search and discuss plans for continuing it. And, you know, I don't, I think it's, this is just my opinion, but pretty clear, we're not going to just pick up right now and continue the superintendent search, that that wouldn't yield us really anything at this moment. And then obviously, that would move into the action item later after we discuss, but do you guys have anything to add to this? Regarding the search, I'm moving forward with the search.
I, I think in December, prior board, including the three of us, made our recommendation clear as far as where we'd like to go, unless it's on anyone's behalf, it's their opinion has changed on that. I mean, we made a recommendation at the time...
Could you repeat that?
To continue negotiate, or to, to suspend the search and negotiate with Dr. Krieger for an extended contract.
So this is perhaps a premature discussion because we can't, at this time, come to the conclusion of whether we want to use McPherson Jacobson in the future because we haven't spoken to Dr. Krieger yet about what those plans are?
Well, we can, we can discuss whether we want to actually continue a search or suspend a search.
But I mean, the timeline is, if, for example, let's just say, we said, look, we, you know, we really like McPherson Jacobson, we want to use them, but we don't want to use them until that October, you know, starting that October, November period, which they recommend and, you know, everything I've read recommends. But if, if Dr. Krieger is going to, you know, go all tree protest on us and tie himself to the desk, you know, for the next two years, I don't, you know, I don't know, you know, you see, my point is, is, I mean, if we're, are we going to tell them in the end, you know, we're going to keep you, you know, we want to use you, but not for two years? I don't, I don't know what the timeline is for us.
Well, I don't think anybody is, so, Michelle, I think that, I'll just jump out there. December 20th, we brought back a recommendation that we, that our permanent search through a national search firm did not meet our expectations. And so that we would, we would be moving forward next year, once we had the new board. So I think that that's...
But we did make a recommendation as a board that...
That Dr. Krieger provided stability in this district, and that is something that we appreciated and that we were looking for going forward.
I believe Dr. Krieger shared in that public meeting his interest in doing that as well.
I did. So... But it still, I think, came back to, this is a brand-new board with five new people, and I think that that, isn't that why this is on here? Because this...
Yes, may still need to be a vote.
Nothing was established. And nothing was, and things do, can change over time, of course. But just to provide the, a true democratic process here with our new members.
I support, I support it. You know, I support your conclusions, you know, it's just a question of the, for me, it's a timeline, yeah.
Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, and, and as I said, you don't have to take any action whatsoever with respect to the search or McPherson Jacobson today. It really was, you know, cart before horse. We didn't want to bring Dr. Krieger's possible contract before you and, before we'd had this current board given indication.
Okay, Sandra had a question or statement first.
I have a statement. I have the minutes with the...
Thank you.
The statement that was made on December 20th. The superintendent search did not meet our expectations. We are fortunate to have an acting superintendent in Dr. Krieger, providing stability to this district. The governing board met with him today and discussed the possible extension of his contract. He has expressed interest, and this board is grateful and supportive of Dr. Krieger continuing in the role. To honor our commitment and allow the new governing board to finalize this decision, no action will be taken today.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have discussed then, it seems, the status of the search. If we're in agreement, you know, all of, it seems that we all agree with the three of you, or Jan does and I do, as far as suspending the search in general. So now going to Michelle, Ms. Marshall, regarding the action item for A, possible action regarding the McPherson Jacobson agreement for the superintendent search. I'm going to let you present that, Ms. Marshall.
Based on the discussion that you just had, I would recommend that you don't take action on the, on the McPherson Jacobson agreement at this time. I can share this discussion with the search firm. They did ask me what was the status. I let them know that you would be discussing it. I'm happy to contact them and let them know that we're on hold for now, and I don't think that will be a surprise to them.
I would like to recommend that, if not tonight, at some point in the future, that we possibly do have an executive session with you, especially you were the contact person for this company, and I'm not sure exactly how it works, but to discuss the performance of McPherson and Jacobson.
We can, we can have an executive session for legal advice regarding the performance on the contract.
Okay, that's what I figured, yes. And I, I think that's necessary.
I think we need to do that, yes.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, so am I moving now, asking for a move to, I suppose, suspend?
Take no action.
Take no action?
Motion to take no action.
On the, on the McPherson Jacobson agreement for the superintendent, do I have a question? To take no action?
My move, we take no action.
Second.
Second.
Second, Board Member Greenberg? On favor of taking no action?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Five to zero. Okay? Finally, I think we are ready for a motion to adjourn, correct? Anyone have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All right, second.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cravitz. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero. We are adjourned at...